Okay, we're gonna go ahead. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order the clerk caller.
Lynn Whitley, County Judge.
Sure.
Roy Charles Brooks, Commissioner, Precinct One.
Present.
Devin Allen, Commissioner, Precinct Two.
Here.
Gary Figgis, Commissioner, Precinct Three.
Here.
J.D. Johnson, Commissioner, Precinct Four.
Here.
Constitutional Court.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Members of Court. Today, what we're going to do is hear presentations from four different firms as relates to the JPS Medical Home. Before we get started, I want to introduce, I believe you know, these two gentlemen, Derek Walls with Broadus and Roger Witt with Levis. They are the team that we chose to be the program managers for the entire bond package as it relates to JPS. Just a couple of housekeeping issues. You'll find in your book a ranking sheet that looks like this. Commissioner Johnson, I believe that you have that ranking sheet also?
I do.
What we're going to ask you to do is, is, once we've concluded with the presentations, at that time, we're going to, I'll provide you the information on the ranking from the ranking committee of JPS. And then you can rank those. If you will, I do not need you to sign those documents. I just simply need you to turn them in to me. We'll do the calculations. This is an open meeting. And so, so we, anyone who wants to be in this meeting, obviously can. We, in the past, what we have done is even after you've made your presentations, we're going to ask you to leave. But that's a discretionary decision that, that you will need to make. I will say that this meeting here is going to be recorded. And we will put that up on our website in a YouTube environment. I believe probably on our website tomorrow. Tomorrow. So it'll be for everyone who would like to view the, all the presentations. So with that, I'm going to ask Derek if you will go ahead and introduce our first firm.
This is Burn, Postel, and SBL.
And if you would, introduce yourselves as you address the court.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, I am Ben Robertson. I'm Vice President of Burn Construction. In our last interviews with our JPS team, J.R. Evans stood here in this role as the Principal in Charge. He is on vacation with his son camping in the middle of nowhere. And as most of you Commissioners know, you've worked with Burn and alongside us, we're family-first. And we decided his camping trip with his son was a little more important than dragging him in. So I'm happy to stand here and fill in his shoes and, of course, answer any questions y'all may have at the end. Once again, Judge Whitley, Commissioners, we thank y'all for the opportunity to present today. Our team, Burn Postel, is a strategic joint venture of two minority-certified firms proudly working alongside each other to grow both each other in our community and help serve our local community. With that, I'd like to talk a little bit about Burn. Just kidding. Liquor is not on. I'm getting advice. I apologize, y'all. There we go. About Burn. So for anyone that is unaware, Burn is a locally-founded Tarrant County firm, 99 years this year. We're gonna have one heck of a centennial next year. We've had the pleasure of working for both the county and for JPS throughout our histories, including working on this very building that we're all meeting in today, as well as Tarrant County Medical Examiners and numerous projects for JPS over the years. We have a legacy of high-quality and high-profile projects throughout North Texas and throughout our area. We do about $515 million a year in volume, 100 employees, veteran-owned, and currently the largest Hispanic-owned contractor in the state of Texas. We are proud to be part of our community and the opportunity to give back, which is why we, whenever we're afforded the opportunity, we partner with firms like Jeff Postel, with Postel, who'll tell us a little bit about him in just a second. And more importantly, with a project like this, it's true to our heart that we are all, all three of the firms on our team are Tarrant County firms. We are Tarrant County residents. This is serving our community and our people. I have actually had numerous stitches in children with broken arms in the JPS facilities. And my wife did all of her clinicals going through respiratory training over 20 years ago. I will not give exact years. She will see the recording. But we're, we're very excited to have an opportunity to be part of what is our medical home and looking at what this can do for our community. With that, I'd like to hand it over to Jeff Postel to tell us a little bit about him. And I will be running the clicks from the side, so please be forgiving if I mess that up.
Jeff?
Good afternoon. Again, I'm Jeffrey Postel, owner of Postel Group Construction. And we are the result of JPS and Tarrant County in your MWV diversity efforts. We are the result. Postel Group was started seven years ago. We started out doing small, jock, $30,000-type jobs for JPS, working for Tarrant County in my past history with another firm. As we grew, because again, of your push for small companies and diverse companies, our next step was hard-bidding for JPS and winning the Behavioral Health Assessment Center, Mission Control job we're working on currently, and other projects and special projects at JPS. The next step now is us partnering with a great Tarrant County Fort Worth firm that sits right across 35 from us on Berry Street. They're on the west, they're on the west side of Berry Street. We're on the east side of Berry Street. Together, we represent South Fort Worth. We represent minority firms and a great, a great firm. So our experience comes from people like Trinity Metro doing their employee health clinic, also working for the North, North Fort Worth Community Health Clinic as well, working on that project. And we're currently together, this team has worked together. We're working at the airport right now, DFW Airport, on the H.C. Gates Project, which is an amazing project if you don't know anything about it. And Postel Group has went from doing those $30,000 projects to now doing about $20 million in volume over the last several years, all because of your push. We're ready for the next step.
Thank you, Jeffrey. That is a fantastic success story. I'm Michael Barnett with SBL Architecture. We will handle the design efforts. We will lead the design efforts with our partners here in the design-build effort. But SBL Architecture started in business in 1994. I was one of the founding partners. We are a Tarrant County firm. We, our headquarters are there. We work in Tarrant County, along with other places, obviously, throughout the state and the country. But about 90% of all our business is healthcare-related. That's the majority of the designs that we get the opportunity to work on. And we're very proud of that fact. We have worked for several other hospital districts in Texas. I think there's at least eight that we're either currently or in the past have worked with. So we've got some experience with that because you guys, to be honest, are a little bit different than maybe some other owners. And, and we understand that. So we have worked with Burn in the past on, on design-build efforts and other type project delivery methods. They, they actually built our office. So we had enough trust in them to do that, and we still like them after that. So that speaks pretty highly of them. We also have a long history with JPS. We, our first project with JPS was in 2004. And we did the Northwest Clinic in Fort Worth. And then we did the Poly Clinic a few years after. We've done about six or seven other clinics for them and, and literally dozens of assignments with JPS. We're very proud of that fact. We probably haven't had a project with them every year in the last 16 years, 17, 18 years, but almost. And we're very proud of that relationship. And, and we have become a resource for the, the facility staff and administration through the years to where they would just call us and have a question about trends in healthcare or code requirements and so forth. And that's when I know that we're doing our job right and we've got a client that we actually like and trust. We're very proud of that fact. So appreciate this opportunity.
My name is Jason Moore. I'm a construction manager with Burn Construction. About 26 years in the industry, fortunate that the last 16 years or so with Burn Construction. And so I want to take a second to introduce the staff we proposed for the project. My role with the project is really, I'm involved from pre-construction through construction in the warranty period. You know, some firms that you may visit with today or elsewhere, you know, a lot of times, they have a pre-construction department and they turn it over to the construction department so there can be a loss in continuity of information flow and knowledge from one, one portion of the project to the other. And we don't operate that way. That is incumbent on me as the leader of this team is to be involved from day one, again, all the way through the warranty period and beyond, so that that continuity is there. And so, as Ben mentioned earlier, J.R. Evans is our Principal in Charge. He couldn't be here today. And then, of course, we have, we have Jeff, who you just met, and Michael as part of the executive team that are, they're leading the charge here. Lee Howell, who you will meet in a minute, is leading up our pre-construction effort. And then we have Carla Culver and Paul Austin today, who you will meet in just a minute, that are boots on the ground, you know, during construction. Michael, do you want to take a second to introduce the design team?
Yes, I'll be the Principal in Charge on the project. Christina Brandon, who was in our last interview, is not here today. She's also out of town this, she's out of state this week on spring break with her family. So I'll cover any questions regarding project management today. But we've got Cliff Spruill, who's our Director of our Design Group. And he will be the project architect, the project designer on the project. And Yan Zhang is, will be involved in the planning, programming, and design, building design integration. Kelly Johnson's another key team member on this. And Kelly, I mentioned Kelly because she's done all the JPS projects with me. And she has a very strong relationship with regards to planning and programming with the JPS user groups.
Thanks, Michael. And so briefly, you know, as Ben and Jeff and Michael all mentioned, you know, our experience with not only healthcare, but with the JPS system. So I'm not gonna take much time here, but we did want to highlight a few projects that show some of our relevant experience. And so as you can see, whether it was the JPS Community Health Center or Poly Technic, you know, other, other healthcare, you know, districts or systems around the metroplex, whether it's Parkland or USMD. And so we have the experience and the knowledge to bring this project to fruition. And again, thank you for allowing us to be here today.
I'm the Design Group Leader for SBL. And I'm just gonna take you quickly through the kind of design approach we see happening here. The first part would be the planning, design, I mean, sorry, programming, design phase, where we gather information about the quantity of rooms, square footage of rooms. We'll meet with user groups. We'll move into schematic design, where we kind of come up with a series of schemes and ideas that the whole group will be involved with, interactive session. Then we'll move into design development. That's where we kind of gather detailed information, room by room, with users, all the pertinent equipment data, everything down from lighting to electrical outlets, controls, et cetera. We'll move into construction documents, where everything is highly detailed, structural, MEP, and then CA. Construction will start.
I'm Yan Zhang with SBL Architecture. I'm a medical planner. We have learned a lot from the past two years. Here are some key strategies for pandemic-resistant healthcare clinic design. Building-in flex spaces can be quickly converted to new uses during a pandemic, where provided flexible for the facility. And also allow, allow, locate staff working zones, allow caregivers to float across clinic to clinic without a pass through public space, where help when there is a staff shortage. And supportive space for the clinic needed to be surgically as well. Separate infectious patients and non-infectious patients flow. Separate staff flow from the public and the patients, where protect clinical staff. Provide infrastructure for remote and telecommunication. And focused on staff well-being, provide a rest space, rest space inside or outside of the units, or outside of the building. Don't overspend on the HVAC infrastructure. We know we needed to increase the ventilation. But there are some feasible options, such as, you know, increasing natural ventilation and also placing diffusers that promote a better airflow. And some hospitals, they even build a unit or wing with negative pressure. Those are some key strategies.
One thing I want to touch on is some of the methods we use during the design process is augmented reality or virtual reality. We've been doing this for a long time in different formats, you know, all the way from beginning in SketchUp, all the way to other methods where the user can actually pan around different spaces, appropriate spaces, and kind of get a feel for materials and scale of the project.
My name is Lee Howell. I'm the Vice President and Chief Estimator for Burn Construction. I started with Burn in 1997, so this is coming on my 25th year from starting with Burn. And it's my pleasure now to pretty much all focus on that pre-construction effort. The last 18 years have been dedicated to estimating and pre-construction. Our slide is representing the major milestone that the design goes through. And that estimating process follows those same milestones of the schematic design, design development, construction documents, all leading towards that GNP. At every step along the way, we're working as a team with our design group, the contractors, and with the end-users for input along the way. Doing constructability review to make sure the documents are concise and that when they're finally ready to go to subcontractors, they're truly ready for that level. We're also working on value engineering or constructability review to look for efficiencies, look for ideas and ways that we can answer questions along the way with small estimates between those major milestone estimates, so that as a team, we can make informed decisions with price information, logistical information, design aesthetics, and then also any input from the design groups. And each of those milestone estimates will begin with a cost estimate summary. This is best thought of as an executive summary. So unfortunately, every, everyone just loves to look at the very bottom line and see what the total cost of the project is. And of course, that total is there. However, the real value of the estimate summary is up above that. Each row, from our very first schematic design estimate all the way through, each row is set up to reflect how we plan on putting that project out to the street, to the subcontract market to bid. So the separate line for concrete, masonry, steel, down through finishes and into the MEP trades. And that is fully backed up by a very detailed estimate. So you will see exactly how many square foot of slab and what unit cost that slab is at, how many linear foot appears and what depth, all the way through the square foot and square yardage of flooring materials and what unit price is there, so that you have no doubt of where those dollars are being spent, what is being spent on, and does that align with the expectations of the project. The cost estimate summary itself, we can divide up and break up if we need to meet needs of the client, if you need to know what certain departments were spending or what the cost was for those versus the overall clinic. We can divide that up as necessary. Everything that we provide to you in the estimate is open book and transparent. So if there's any questions anywhere along the way, we're happy to talk about that. And also, we don't just hand this estimate to you and then walk away. We're eager to walk through that estimate line by line and explain to everyone on the group where those dollars are being spent, so that everyone knows exactly that it's being spent accurately and in the appropriate places.
Jeff?
Lee does a lot of hard work when it comes to pre-con. And so following that up during the buyout phase, how do we take that hard work and control it? We've got rough escalation going on in the market. We've got supply chain issues in the market. So what's gonna really be important is for us to identify long-lead items early in the process, extremely early in the process. And then also making alternate suggestions if we are gonna have some lead time items that affect ultimately the project schedule. So our market research and our existing projects right now are telling us that steel joists and metal decking, roof components, roofing membranes, light gauge assemblies, your cold form metals, and your de-molecular partitions have extremely long lead times. There are some stuff that are, that are absolutely ridiculous right now. So what we need to do early on is break out some early project procurement packages, right? We've got to get some trade packages on the street for bid early, early in the process. The other thing is that we've got to work with our manufacturers. We've got to work with our trade suppliers and have heavy communication. And we've got to make sure that we're locking pricing and getting it locked in and keeping it there, so we can not affect the budget. One thing that'll really help this project, Burn and Postel both, we have about 20,000 square feet of owned indoor temperature-controlled storage area. We can order materials right now. Our subs can order materials and they can place them in our place for this project. Also, a couple of acres for things that don't have to be inside. We can put outside on our acreage that we have here, a mile and a half from, from this building. So right here, local, we can help. We'll go to the next slide. So let's talk about MWVBE spend goals. Now, both of our companies are MWVBEs. This is extremely important to us. Again, I talked earlier about our rise through the, through this market. We take this very seriously. So right in the design phase, we're at 30% already with KAI on our engineering side and then JQ on, on the civil and engineering side. During pre-construction, it's gonna be very important that we're working with our local member organizations and our chambers and our construction organizations, working with the Arlington Black Chamber, working with the Fort Worth Metropolitan Black Chamber, working with the Hispanic Chamber, working with NA MAC, working with all our local vendors, to make sure that our, our trade companies know about this project and they're educated about it. Really being creative and innovative about taking large trade primes, your larger MEPs and your larger drywallers, making sure that they have second-tier folks, second-tier smaller firms, that they can help get into this project and they can have success in this project as well. Hosting those events, the networking events, we'll do all those things as well to make sure that it's out on the market. Again, both Burn and Postel are certified, MBEs and HUD. Burn is a veteran-owned company. And 100%, we're 100% committed to implementing a great, great program for this project.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Carla Culver. And I have been at Burn for about seven years now. And I would be the project manager for this project, and I'm excited to be here today. I'd like to talk to you real quick about kind of the construction approach. So after Lee and his team finished the estimating portion, they kind of hand off the baton to Paul and I, who's on the ground onsite every day overseeing construction. And so starting off with mobilization, leading on to that heavy construction phase, your close-out phase, and turning over the building and to the end-users, then everybody's favorite, the final completion, where the building is yours. And so the ribbons below in red kind of show you the different elements of each of those phases and kind of how they flow through. And we'll hit on most of these elements in a couple slides. And just kind of highlighting that we working with SBL and, of course, Postel during construction to make sure that the flow of information is consistent and that we're getting, you know, shop drawings in and submittals and making sure that all the boxes are checked to make sure that we can order all those long-lead materials and have those onsite when Paul wants to put them up. So I'll talk to you guys about the three phases of quality inspection. Burn and Postel are very passionate about our quality of work, take a lot of pride in what we do. We've all been around for a long time. And at the end of the day, we want the best final product for the end-users. And so kind of the way we do that is the very beginning of the project, before any materials go onsite, we have this pre-construction meeting. Bring those people onsite that are actually building the building. They've gone through the drawings. They understand their materials. They don't have any questions. And they understand, you know, Paul and I have high expectations of their quality of installation. And once they come onsite and start installing, and that we are looking at those first elements of installation, really scrutinizing them and checking on the quality of that installation. And those first 10 feet of brick, how they look. Architects, how does it look? Is this acceptable? And then just making sure throughout construction that they're maintaining that quality that we've accepted in that first 10 feet of installation. All right, Paul?
So I'm Paul Austin. As you said, boots hit the ground. I am the Superintendent, been with Burn for 17 years. This last February is 27 years total in the industry. You know, you hear it's kind of cliche, but people say safety is job one. And we mean it. It starts the day we walk in with the very beginning meetings, talking about what we expect, how we're gonna pull this off, and what we expect of you each and every day. We have safety managers that walk the job, along with me and Carla, that walk at least twice a day on top of our regular duties to make sure this happens. QC, again, starts out the very original first phone calls. When you walk out there, you start talking about where you're gonna do, what you expect from mock-up to the first inspections. Again, walk with each and every sub, every single day, making sure they're doing it safely, effectively. You know, when you do your mock-up, sometimes you get a different crew. And then they send out the B crew to just rush right through it, making sure that that crew keeps up with the standard that they're talking about, like we discussed earlier. When you're making your schedule and you get buy-in from every single sub or every single second-tier sub, so they know what's going on, you can make that schedule. Most of the time, you can make it one time and stick to it. And if you have buy-in from everybody, it works pretty good. As long as there's a good communication going on, it works really well. When we bring in, you know, new materials and stuff, we do a thing called a good neighbor policy. If we're bringing in large deliveries, say, long joist, long steel, concrete pour early in the morning, we want to go around and make contact with those people, as well as keeping the job in a kind of clean environment, so that it's not blown all around. It's not just a scramble fence. The actual job is clean. We're making contact with neighbors and you guys to make sure that it's gonna be there on your site.
All right. So on the screen, you'll kind of see a rough preliminary schedule that we were asked to put together. Of course, at this point, we don't have any drawings or anything to really flesh out a schedule. But there are a few key milestones on here that I'd like to kind of overview with you guys. We have kind of built this schedule based on an April notice to proceed. And with that April notice to proceed, we were anticipating breaking ground kind of mid, end of October of this year. We know this is a facility that the community really needs. And we understand that need in the community and want to, you know, work with JPS and try to fulfill that need as, as best as we can.
There was a lot of information, really quick, and we'll open this up to Q and A's in just a second. But just want to take a quick, brief, highlight reel summary of where we're at. First off, you know, the Burn Postel SBL team is the only team you're interviewing today that's all Tarrant County. This is our home. We're gonna be users of these facilities. We're taxpayers paying for them. And we're excited to see them come to our communities. That's very important to us. We don't often have the opportunity to build for our neighbors and to be able to take our kids by a job site on the way home from school and brag about what we've created and what we're doing to better our community. On top of that, our healthcare experience is bar none. We have nearly 2 million square feet of hospitals, clinics, laboratories, you name it. We understand the facilities. They're not just like every other building. Obviously, we've did a great job at the Northeast Tarrant County Courthouse for Commissioner Figgis. But things are different in a, in a medical facility. We want to build a facility that's a forever home that you can go in and, and change as the community changes. 10 years from now, healthcare's different. And we need to be able to build a facility that we can come in and completely eradicate a lab and put whatever it is that the community needs at that point. And that's what SBL specializes in in their design, is building a facility that we can change for the future. When y'all come back to us five, 10, 15, 50 years from now, we can make sure that this is still a home that y'all are proud of and is serving the medical needs of the neighborhoods we all live in. On top of that, you know, we have, all three of us have a multi-decade success story with JPS. Arguably, Jeff's is a little shorter, but every project he's done with y'all has grown him and helped Postel Construction be that much better. And we're so excited to be able to bring him along with us, to, to let him grow and, and become a better firm. And he's already just knocking it out of the park alongside us out of DFW Airport. And we think that, that our ability to, to build this together is gonna be great. And we're excited to partner with him and mentor his entire team across the board. And, you know, all of our team highlighted our collaborative approach. From day one, from the napkin sketches, our job is to sit down with you, the Commissioners, with Broadus, with the stakeholders, so that we can understand what you need right now, so that when we break ground in October, we're building that facility that has to, that serves the needs of now and help prepping it for the future. And our job through that collaborative process is to understand your wish list. And Lee and his team during pre-construction are going to price out options. There's gonna be things that, that if y'all could afford it, we really would like to have X. It's our job to figure out what that dollar is. And then we can bring it to y'all and say, for this much of a premium, we can also do this, well beyond anything y'all had envisioned so far. And so we get to empower y'all with the ability to, to plan for the future and to maybe even make more enhanced decisions for this facility. And more than that, 99 years in the community, we have strong local relationships. We know each and every one of y'all as friends, not just our elected officials that serve us day-to-day. And so we are excited to take those strong relationships, to breathe into our local subcontracting community, and to lift up anyone we can and give them an opportunity to be part of this project alongside us and help them with, continue with our legacy of unmatched quality. We've won over 150 regional and national quality awards, including JPS Center for Women's Health was a national award-winning project. And that's because of our quality and our commitment to our, to our home. And so with that, we're gonna invite the whole team up so that we can answer questions as you will. I know the Q and A session with a hot mic and a camera is a little different. But we thank y'all for your time. And by all means, feel free to ask us anything. And we will step up to the mic as we feel best qualified to answer the questions you present.
So one of the things that we have asked the presenters is to present for about thirty-five minutes, then we've allotted about fifteen minutes for Q and A. Obviously, you can add more to it or subtract whatever you'd like, but, but we are now in that point where that we read the Q and A.
Questions? So each one of the principal firms is based in Tarrant County, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Burn and Postel are a mile and a half from here, just off Berry and Thirty-Five, splitting the highway. And SBL has been located in North Arlington for, come on, twenty-seven years now?
We, six, we weren't here the first year, we've been here since.
It took, it took them a year to figure it out, but they got here and.
We got out now, it's quick.
And each of the construction firms has individual work to do on the project?
Yes, sir. Yeah. Commissioner, we, we will have staff on the project. I'll be an executive on the project. And one thing about Postel, we are a builder.
You are what?
We are, we, we're a builder.
Yes.
We, we build. We're, we're not, we're not a consultant, we're not a, just a tag along box checking company. We are a builder and we will be part of the team building this project. Boot on the grill.
And, and just to, to marry up to that statement, part of our process as Burn, and any of y'all know the history, when John Avell bought the company in nineteen ninety-five, we were doing twenty million a year, which coincidentally is where Jeff is right now. And this community believed in us and we've grown and our job now as a leader in the minority contracting community is to give that same back. And so Jeff has an assistant super that'll work under Paul. Jeff's marketing team has been already working alongside my team to learn how we do the process just to this point, uh, whether we're fortunate enough to be a part of the project or not. We've mentored in how we pursue projects, how we put together our presentations. And Jeff will have teams assigned with Lee and his people working through pre-con to learn how we do estimating. Not to say the way that we do it is better, but the only way a person can get better is to, to learn from those they're working with. And our job is to let them sit right alongside with us because we're one partner for you, we're not two separate firms.
Yeah, I want to mention as well, the point of these relationships for the minority or smaller firm to grow out of it and also be a good supplier for JPS and Tarrant County. It's not, we're not a partner that's looking to be a part of this job and, okay, we, you don't hear from us for another ten years. We're going to be bidding JPS and Tarrant County project by ourselves because of the relationship that we have with Burn and because of working on this project. So it's a very great team here, we're excited, and you're going to have benefits outside of this project when we're done with it.
I just want to say to my colleagues that I first met Jeff Hutzke when he was project supervisor on this very building in which we're sitting.
Oh, and Tom, I'll create, Tom Vandergriff, Civil Courts.
Or the Civil Court.
Yes, yes, sir.
One of them. Uh, he went from having a job to establishing his own company that now does twenty million a year and growing.
I have five questions. Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay.
I'll put you at your three.
Yeah, right. So first question is for these, the three companies, is this your first partnership?
As, as three?
As all three?
Yes. Uh, Burn and Postel has worked together, SBL and Burn has worked together, but as all three of us, yes.
Okay, making sure I understand that. Okay, good. Um, you mentioned some of the constraints with the, with the market with materials. What are your thoughts, concerns, things that we should be thinking of in terms of labor?
In terms of labor?
Labor.
So our relationships with our local trade partners that'll be bidding this project competitively will be extremely important. And the fact that Burn and Postel both, we've built a lot of stuff here in Tarrant County. So we've got great relationships with companies that we know can, that can supply the labor for this job. Uh, the other thing that's going to be important is that we also, during our outreach efforts, we work between our trade companies and the community to say, hey, if you are in need of people, we're going to help you find those people here local, uh, to give job opportunities. But we'll definitely have to keep our, keep our finger on the pulse of labor because the market, over the next year, there are more and more projects coming online. We all know that. And, you know, part of, part of our job is to make sure that we're hiring in, uh, trade contractors that can supply the, the, the people power to do this project.
Let me tag onto that right away. Just add, you know, some of the, some of the things we do to ensure that, that we have adequate labor on the job, because it's an excellent question that, that the industry is facing. And so, you know, as, as Jeff said, it, it starts in pre-construction. It starts, as soon as we become a member of the team, we're out advertising this project as we're bidding other jobs or we're going to, to trade shows and organizational shows and, and Lee and his team and my team, you know, and, and being in operations, we're, we're talking to the, the subcontractors that we have on projects now. And so we're advertising this job immediately. And then as we work through pre-construction, one of the key elements of, of the bidding process and our bid packages that we put together is a schedule, the project schedule, right? And we're including in that schedule, a very detailed schedule, so that subs, when they start looking at it, they can see when their forecast is to be on the site. And so they can check the marks and say, all right, this fix, it fits into my backlog from a, you know, labor standpoint, as opposed to them just guessing, hey, when would I actually hit the job site? So, so we're working very hard to, to advertise, make sure they understand what the needs of, of the project are as far as from the, the amount of labor, when that labor would be needed on the job site.
Great. Okay, final, actually, I only have two, two more questions. Uh, one is, um, and somewhere in here, I saw that you all worked on a, a county, I mean, a project for Midland County. It, it just said Midland County Health. What type of project was that?
Yes, that was a project we designed, uh, it was hospital project. It was, um, uh, actually, we've done several, uh, we're working in Midland and Odessa, but Midland County. We did a large women's center, uh, it was probably that one. Uh, and then we're working, uh, now currently for Midland Memorial Hospital. And we've, we've done a master plan and we've done several projects already and we're probably going to do more. That's the county hospital.
And when was that? You said the one current, but what was the previous project?
Previous one was in Odessa. It was probably six, seven years ago when it was built. Uh, the Midland one is, is ongoing. We've probably completed six or seven projects. We've completed a full master plan for them and then they're going to start implementing the master plan probably later this year. So they're a current plan.
My final question for whoever wants to answer is, what is your, your current understanding of what the community needs out of this neighborhood medical home?
And Jeff, Jeff and I can, can tag team on this, but, you know, this is, this is our community and, and what we've learned is that we need a place for families to go. We need, we need mom, dad, kids, grandfather, grandmother, to be able to all go to the same appointment and, you know, and it's stop in different clinics in the same facility. We have sometimes a transportation access issue, not everyone is able to drive themselves to appointments. And so the idea of building these in our various districts is that we're bringing those, those medical services that they need and might not otherwise have access to, to them, so that they can come in and, you know, get, have a dedicated women's health center to get their annual mammograms and things like that and, and have an OB-GYN to serve with pregnancies and those mark and those needs, as well as geriatric services. Uh, you know, we have an aging population. We, we forget about it, but we, we do have an aging population, we need to make sure.
We don't forget about it.
No disrespect. Um, but, you know, we want to make sure that basically it's a turnkey one-stop for the community, whereas a hundred years ago, that doctor would come to the house and check on everybody while they were there. We're, we're building that dedicated home, and y'all, y'all named it a medical home for a reason. It's exactly that. This is the medical home for our community so that we can go there and get all the services we need. Some areas of Tarrant County, students can't, you know, attend school because they don't have access to vaccinations. We, you know, we'll have that ability in a pediatric served clinic inside this facility. And I think that as we move forward with the various medical homes throughout the county, I think you will see some different needs in different parts of town. That's back to our, our story of why this needs to be an adaptable facility. When we build this, we'll have a very specific knowledge from y'all on what that demographic needs and we're going to make sure we have those services available. And then as the, you know, communities change, we can adapt them accordingly.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Yeah, um, thank you. Y'all built a, um, a building for, for us there in, in Hurst, Northeast Courthouse. And, uh, you know, from a question standpoint, I guess my question would be, I hope you still work with the same attitude that you had then. I, uh, one of the first meetings that we had, and I think at that time, Matthew was, Amala was very involved and, uh, and apologized, I cannot remember our project superintendent, but he was, he did a fabulous job. But one of the things that I said was, what I really want more than anything is that when this building is complete, that we not only have a very nice building and a very functional building, is that we're all still friends. And you achieved that, or you achieved it with fun, color. So, um, I thought you did a outstanding job, uh, at that particular, on that project. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I, I would like to point out that JR Evans, who unfortunately couldn't be here today, was your project manager on that project. And as he's grown in the company, he is now vice president over all of our field team. So he has ensured that that commitment to our people and to our clients has been instilled in Jason and Carla and Paul and everything that we do. And, uh, beyond that, I know Lee was the head of your pre-construction process on that and I'm sure he has, he'd love to chime in as well.
So yes, Commissioner, it was a pleasure to work with you those years ago and I plan to do it again. I fondly remember the fun that we had during those early pre-construction meetings at schematic design and design development, working with the architect, digging through details, figuring out different ways to handle solutions appropriately, spending money intentionally and appropriately, and then also looking for savings intentionally and appropriately. And the fun banter that all of us had as a team, you could never tell who was working for who because we were having such fun doing that project. And to reiterate what Ben said, JR Evans, who was your project manager, still with Burn, Leland Tia, who was the onsite project coordinator, still with Burn. Obviously, I'm still with Burn now. JR and I have both moved up to the vice president level and, and chief estimator for myself. So yes, we are family-oriented, we just keep growing ourselves up with them and we value those long-term clients and, and looking back and going to those projects recently and many, many years in the past.
My only concern about that project is I hope you run out of red ground.
Whenever we speak about that project, we do discuss the red ground on occasion.
Still there.
And, and before that, a few years before that, you did another project.
Yes, sir.
And that was Ken Mayfield Maintenance.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. And, and we did, in between the maintenance facility and, and the courthouse in Hurst, we, uh, we did the clock tower restoration as well as the superstructure of this particular building and the Tarrant County Medical Examiners. Uh, we love our history, this is our town. And so, um, while I'm, I'm greedy and I want to say we, I want to win every project and these guys make fun of me, uh, we just like to be part of our community and these are forever homes. I've been driving my daughter around, who's now old enough to drive herself, so long that anytime we have friends visiting, we play the Burn Built It game, because, because she loves the history that we've been part of here. And, and if, we would appreciate that same opportunity to continue that legacy on this project.
Two other questions. One, and I don't know if this is much of a question for y'all as it may be, uh, for JPS, but virtual visits, telehealth, uh, what capabilities are we expecting to have within the building? I know we're going to talk about having a lot of different services provided, but regardless of however many you provide, the first one that comes in will be one that's not provided.
Yes, uh, the first slide we had when it was talking about the design process was visioning. And that may be the most critical phase, I hate to admit it. That's where we get like what you just brought up, saying, this is important to me, we got to have it. And that's where we, we help extract that from you of what, what's the real program. Just don't make it too big, don't make it too small, our level of quality is here. Here's everything we want to do in this building. It's obviously a multi-clinic facility. Um, but that's where, if you brought that up, that's where we would make sure we handled it in the facility.
Second question.
So it's part of the design.
With, with the volatility and the, the whole market, not only in materials, but also in labor contingencies, you know, I guess walking through the guarantee, you know, the design build at a guaranteed maximum price, how do you weave in, you know, something that may change overnight because of the ability to get it here?
Communication is the key with that, sir. Everything we do is very transparent, open book. From those early schematic designs all the way through, we're already looking towards issues exactly like that. And then as we near to that GMP, as far as handling potential exposures on a trade-specific item, we may have a specific contingency only in that trade versus, for lack of a better term, penalizing the entire project. We're going to put money exactly on steel because that's where the volatility exists or roofing materials. Or as we were saying, we find ways around that. We strategically purchase some materials early to lock those material prices in, get them on order, get the manufacturing started. It's also a lead time issue, not just dollars, but also lead times. It does not do us any good to have all the foundations ready, but the piers, and the piers are ready, but the columns are taking so long for manufacturing due to international affairs or what have you. So we want to purchase that steel if we need to early so that we have the columns when necessary so the structure can go up. We're looking at the whole project, dollars and schedule, and how do we overcome those hurdles as a team and openly so that the county and the, the JPS group all understand exactly what that plan is and how do we implement that plan for everyone's benefit?
If you were creating, I'm going to cheat and take another question, I said Charlie asked for. Um, you know, I'm one of the one, I'm the bean counter on the group. I'd love to be able to take this one design and reproduce it three more times. From a standpoint, is that at all feasible? And if so, I mean, we just talked about having to order a lot of columns and steel and things like that. I mean, conceivably, if that could happen, could you order enough for all four, knowing that they're going to be somewhere enough that you're not going to have to wait until you get to that particular location and then do it?
I think it just became back to an estimating question.
Probably more construction. But one thing, I'll, I'll answer first, but the, from the design standpoint, of course, you, you can do that. And you can be very efficient about it and might save some dollars on the subsequent buildings in doing that. Uh, the problem is, is if your program changes with a different neighborhood or some, something else comes up that you would want, uh, then we're changing the building and so forth. But there's kind of a rule, if we do, uh, if we're building something and we're going to order something for the next project, if we know when that next project is, then it makes sense. If it's less than so many months or years. If it gets beyond, call it three, four, or five years when we might be building that building, it doesn't do any good to buy the things now and set them on the ground to do it. If we're doing them all now, it makes perfect sense. Or do one now, the next one's right after.
Pretty close to the now.
We would love to do that for you, I'll just put that.
That would be easy and you could save.
I have a feeling I might hear that same comment from three others.
You'll hear that from three others. You could save some money if you did that next.
Yes, we do not foresee that materials are going to get cheaper or not much cheaper in the near to far future. So the earlier you can procure them and lock that pricing in and even potential historic, it's now a known commodity sitting there, you just have to be very careful design-wise and make sure that you're staying within that, those constraints that you now have. And one example to that is that Burn is currently building it a second of two office buildings in north, um, just north of town. These were started, these were bid and then started nine to twelve months apart, the exact same building on two different sites, and they were within three percent of each other. Part of that was that the, many of those same subcontractors, and it was, you know, bid, it wasn't a public bid, it was a private building, but it was openly bid. But those subcontractors who were on it became, they learned their efficiencies. And so most of those subcontractors are bidding on it again and want it. And so we are able to keep that budget in line on that private project, almost identical buildings, but on two different sites. So there's just a variation on the, on the site elements. So it can be done. We didn't pre-purchase the materials on that like a year ahead of time, but it just shows that working together, you can accomplish goals.
Any other questions at this time?
What didn't we ask you that we should have?
Are you going to journalism school?
I want to mention something about the design build process. It's, design build is not for every project at every time, at every place. Uh, it, I think it's totally appropriate for this type facility, uh, here, because you get the benefits of, we can save you time, we can save you money. You tell us, here's, here's my pot of money. This is all I've got. I want you to go build me that for this. I want you to go build me that for this. And then it's our job to take that, tell you if we do it for that, or tell you, well, we might need to adjust some things. And having the contractor onboard, the designer onboard, and the owner onboard at the same time from day one is where you get those benefits, and that's where you get to the communication. If it's strong and you've got an experienced team doing it, you can really get some benefits on a building like this. I want to commend you on that decision because I think it's the right one for this type project.
Do y'all have any questions from J.P.S. or State Department?
So, a medical home is clearly not an MOB. It's very unique, it's very different. And you touched on some of the things. As we see this medical home, it's going to have behavioral health component to it. It's going to have, probably have a pharmacy, it's going to have specialty, rotating specialist. We've talked about telehealth. How would your team, this is really more of an SBL question, how would your team then be able to communicate all these different concepts and ideas that's, that's unique to a medical home, not an MOB, and how you, how will you convey that effectively to the team to, to make those final decisions?
Yeah, we showed the one slide where it was an augmented reality thing, where it's visualization during the design process where you can really see what it's going to be like before it's built. And that's where we got, we kind of pride ourselves on communicating that with clients who may not be as experienced as you guys are with, with facilities. But it's very important that you know what we're designing while we're designing before it's built. That way, there are no surprises when it gets built. So, that's, all the tools we used was why we kind of showed that. That's one way to see where you feel like you're in the space, you go, oh, wait a minute, I thought that was live, I thought it was going to be, you know, da-da-da-da. And then we can adjust at the right time during the design process. But like, one thing pops to mind is when you mentioned that is, we're going to have multiple entrances to this facility, because you've got different type clients coming in at different times and they have different needs. For instance, we might have one where we have, if there's another pandemic ever, or if it just keeps going on and on like it has, we may want a separate facility for people dealing with that, then call it the well visit reception area. If we have behavioral health, we may not want them coming in and dealing with the people in the well visit and reception waiting area. So, I see that as something here. We're going to have some common areas that need to, to work a certain way, but we're going to have some special needs that we have to address. We don't want to just throw all them into one door and one room and say, boy, what do I do now? That, that's going to be key to this.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate very much your presentations.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
So, if we can recess for about 10 minutes, that way we'll have the other presenter come up and, and get ready for their presentation.
Eva?
Okay, so, before we get started, just a quick comment. So, let's get into, you have about 35 minutes to make your presentation, we're allowing, or no, we're, we're asking the court to take at least 15 minutes to ask questions. And there's been a question asked, this is an open meeting, and so anyone can attend this meeting. We've had some vendors ask if they could stay and listen to the, the presentations by other vendors. You have that absolute right to do that. We're asking you to reconsider that though, and not do that. That is your absolute right. So, if you want to stay, you can stay, but we're asking you. And Derek, will you go ahead and introduce the next vendor?
Yeah, this is Turner Pottery Bennett Partners Design Build.
Great. Good to go?
Yes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Nick Barker, Vice President General Manager for Turner Construction, North Texas Division. It's very nice to see all you in person. I know the last time was virtual, so it's great to be here, to see everyone live in action. Just a little bit about our team. So, first and foremost, we know, you know, it's been on our radar, the J.P.S. program for many years, many of you as well. So, very excited to be considered for this opportunity. We know it's the first one, or one of the first ones out of the gate, and how important it is to set the bar high. So, we'd be, we'd love the opportunity to set that bar with you, just being the first one of the bond program. With that being said, our team consists of the partnership of Pottery and Bennett Partners, and we've been partners together through various jobs throughout the Metroplex, and specifically here in Tarrant County. You're getting the best of each of our organizations, both from an individual standpoint and from organizational standpoint. With that, some of the value adds that we provide to the J.P.S. team. One, the national healthcare relationships and experience that we have, along with our local presence here in Tarrant County, can really bring the best of lessons learned, lessons learned, along with the local resources and relationships to this project. Number two, we have access to a supply chain management group that is something different than other contractors that they don't have. They are, all they do is plugged into the supply chain management to really ensure that we get the most efficient deliveries from a time and from a cost standpoint. Right now, that is a very critical aspect to budget and cost certainty, or budget and schedule certainty. And then, and thirdly, just to provide a proven history when it comes to inclusiveness and NWE participation. Our culture of all three of our organization, it goes way beyond just the numbers. It's not a number to us, it's part of our, who we are, so much so that regardless if this was a public job, private job, Turner Construction has a 20% commitment regardless. Now, on this job, it's much more than that, and we will absolutely meet it and have no issues with it, but it's not more than just a number. You'll hear from our team just some of the ideas of how we engage the community and things that we do beyond just embracing and building capacity with our, with our trade partner and our small business owners. So, most importantly, there's four pillars of any construction job. There's budget, there's schedule, there's quality, and there's safety. So, I don't want to say they're table stakes, but that should be the minimum requirement from this team of your contractor. We should absolutely be able to knock that out of the park, and we will. But what this team's going to do above and beyond that is to make everybody here in this room their life easier along the way. Construction is hard, there's no secret about that. But it's that journey along that process on how you get there that really is what sinks in. And for us, this team, it's not just about the one job, it's also about the relationship with the people in this room going forward through the full bond program. We're very grateful for the opportunity, and with that, I want to turn it over to Michael.
Thanks, Nick. Yeah, the, the first project that I worked on that was designed build was with Turner Construction in 1991 for a building in Huntsville, Alabama. So, we've been doing this together for a while, and different set of guys, some of them probably weren't born then, but different set of guys. But, but it really is, is something that, that's a process that we will be fully integrated together into a team. That's an important piece of this, and it really is, is something that you guys have been wise in thinking about, of how, how to approach this project. You all know that, that our firm is very deep in our local experience. We're based in Tarrant County. We only have a base in Tarrant County. The vast majority of our projects are here in Tarrant County. And so, we bring a depth of local knowledge along with the rest of the team. One of the other aspects of teaming up somebody like us with someone like Turner is just the, the strategic buying power that a firm like them has. They're a nationwide firm with a really deep medical practice, and it's very beneficial. And they also bring to the table Turner Engineering Group. And they really serve really as a bridge or a liaison between the design process, the pre-construction process, and the construction process. A lot of those guys come from a design background, so they understand really kind of both sides of the table. But we've assembled a really strong team. I'm really excited that we're here together to talk to you today, and really just pleased for the opportunity to be here, and I'll hand it back to Nick.
So, along with my good friend Sharon, so just, I wanted to talk about on this slide, there's a lot of numbers up there, but what we're trying to share with the group is the experience in the healthcare market. And there's, again, a lot of big numbers, but beyond the numbers, Turner's done a lot of healthcare jobs, but it's also about a lot of relevant experience in Tarrant County and the DFW Metroplex, anything, and with this team. So, UT Southwestern Moncrief, we've done work at Baylor Scott &amp; White, we've done work at OU Medical, and just recently, several jobs with James Glasser Superintendent on the J.P.S. campus. With that, I want to turn it over to my friend Sharon.
Thanks, Nick.
You go.
Again, good afternoon, and I'm Sharon Douglas, owner of Pottery Construction, located in Fort Worth for more than 26 years. It's been indeed a tremendous and outstanding role to play a part in the Tarrant County community. As far as I'm concerned, I'm going to set the bar for the small contractors. I'm going to be reaching out and making sure that we move forward. And with a company like Turner, we can't help but move forward because they are committed. I'm here because Turner's here. I've done two projects just recently. I am Turrell High School, along with presently YMLA, Young Men's Leadership Academy, which we're almost done, Commissioner, and looking forward to it. Thank you.
I'm Kelby Sue, I'm a principal at Park Hill, but more importantly, I'm the director for our healthcare practice. It's really an honor to be here to compliment what Michael has gone through with their depth of experience with their work and experience in Tarrant County. But the compliment that Park Hill will bring is that really focused to what is going to be the patient environment, really the family environment. What is that going to be important as, not only from a care perspective of that use, but also a position for the care provider? We feel like that's really going to be a really in-depth focus for what we want to take. You know, Park Hill has a history of 76 years, and our healthcare history is about 50 of that 76. So, we're really in-depth into what is going on and best practices, and looking at the things that are really guiding the care environments for today's staff, but also for the users on that side. And the other piece that I would regret without saying is, we're really proud that we have a Tarrant County position too at our office in the Arlington. We've had some opportunities to do that with some of our other design teams, not healthcare, but others. So, really a great opportunity, we're excited to see what we can bring to the table because we know it's going to be a really great product for you guys. And I'm going to turn this back to Michael.
This is the, the part where I'm supposed to introduce our firm, but I think some of you guys know our firm better than I do, but some of you may not, but we, we've not been around 76 years like, like Park Hill, but we've been around 65 years. And certainly happy that, that, that we're still here and still doing work in Tarrant County. We do a wide variety of work, as most of you know. We don't concentrate just on medical or something like that, which is why we brought Park Hill in with us to help out with, with that aspect. We have done medical facilities like the one that's in the, the Tarrant County Jail in the lower left-hand corner of the slide, or the Fort Worth Endoscopy Center there in the upper right-hand corner of the slide. But our firm is really focused on doing work here locally. One of our core values is helping the communities that we work in be the best that they can be. This project certainly is, is geared towards doing that. It's, it's an important aspect in that part of the community that, that we want to be a part of. And as far as local experience, you know, I would, I would put our record of local experience up against any other firm. As I said, we do the vast majority of our work in Tarrant County. And one of the functions we sort of play in that role is, it's, it's really an extension of the architecture, but it's sort of the community outreach and, and asking the hard questions sometimes, or saying the things to, to a group that, that it may be difficult for the client to say. An example of that is we're doing some work with, with another entity here in Fort Worth, and I have a better relationship with the city council person than, than my client has. And so, I end up being the liaison and doing the presentations, sometimes passing along good news and sometimes passing along bad news to the city council person. And so, those are the sorts of roles we play because we're very rooted in the community and, and very, very strong in, in Tarrant County, as is Sharon and her friend.
Thank you, Mike. Some of you may know, I'm actually serving as chair of Southeast Fort Worth Inc. at the present, and that means that we have to get out in the community. I work closely with Fort Worth ISDs, along with small contractors. I try and serve as a mentor presently, and sometimes that's a difficult chore. However, we'll continue to do that. Mike and I come from the same cloth. We want to make sure that we are successful throughout Tarrant County. Now, with all the different projects going on, our focus is going to be that we bring the BVE to the table, and that's the veteran. And I'm really excited to say that veterans are now coming to the table. We're looking forward to working with you. Excuse me. This is so important to me. Personally, I give a show called Things You Need to Know, and it's dedicated to small contractors. So, looking at this, it's just hitting home with our local outreach. First of all, I'm going to be talking to J.P.S. I want to get with J.P.S. to get their involvement in the outreach portion of it, along with going all the way down, driving it home to the neighborhoods. And then our strategy will be to break up packages. Why? Because that gives the contractor the opportunity, the small contractor, the opportunity to play a part in tier one. And what do I mean in tier one? They are the prime. Procurement, if you look at the line items here, I'm going to jump all the way down to the bottom, accelerated program. This accelerate package, excuse me, this accelerate package is for textur. Textur is a program that is set up for small contractors for their pay applications. We want to make sure everybody get their applications in and get paid on time. Now, compliance, this is very crucial. We're going to make sure that we turn it in monthly to J.P.S., and of course, to our group, and at the end of that project, we will know exactly where we are. Our goal is 33%. Thank you.
And those are all the things Sharon and the group does to ensure that we're set up to achieve that percentage. And as we mentioned earlier, whether a minority participation goal is established or not, we, we try to achieve that on all of our projects. So, working with our trade partners, knowing the industry, we've identified percentages of the project here that we feel we can get participation through the minority and BVE participants. And as you see, we can, we feel confident we can achieve and exceed that goal, and with the help of our design team, we can exceed it quite a bit.
Thanks, Bill. Yeah, we, the design team, we, we are also going to exceed that goal and probably be able to do that with firms that we work with a lot here locally. This is a design process, we're not going to spend a whole bunch of time on this, it's a, it's in many ways a very typical process, but the process we're going to go through being integrated with, with the construction team is one that lets us think about things that we as architects don't always get to think about. They're going to help us think about deliverability of materials. We're certainly in an environment right now that procuring the right materials for the project are really difficult, which has an impact on cost and schedule that they're going to help us mitigate. It also helps us think about how we do things, how we construct things, because they're the guys out there in the field having to do it. James is, is over there nodding his head, I'm sure, because it's difficult. It's easy to draw things on a piece of paper or on a computer screen, sometimes really difficult out in the field to build those things. So, having, having Turner and Pottery with us to help us think through those things is going to simplify that process. But every good, every good design process, every good construction process starts out with a good program and getting off on the right foot. And we're going to ask Kelby to speak for a couple of minutes about how they start with the programming effort. Kelby?
Programming is really part of the item you just saw on the previous screen about discovery. It's one of those items that we set the course straight at the first, we feel like we're going to really have a great, successful project with that. What you're seeing is an example of two tools that we use, these are just one of two, and these would be items that we would actually supply to you to get you a preview of what our in-depth process is going to be. And looking at the one on your left, is going to be about primary care exam annotations. Really what that looks at is really what is the evidence-based design best practices for an environment like this? What are those things, related outcomes and design strategies that are going to work for the families? But also, most importantly, what are going to work for the care providers? We recognize those two blend into the buildings, and they each have a strong responsibility and presence, and so how does that best accomplish? And what are the goals and objectives that you're wanting to do that with? It's also then parlayed with the item of the collection of data. We know that this is a new facility, but we can also lean on existing data that you may have. It talks about physician patterns, what are different rates of turning rooms, the things that are really going to be important to help us establish from a program and a discovery. Really, is the square footage that's projected working for what you're wanting to do, and does it meet the needs? I.e., do we need 20 exam rooms? Do we need 15? Again, it makes a, really a sophisticated projection of where you need to be based on where you're wanting to project on your use of the spaces. We also want to put in not only what is going to be the initial pieces of development, what are long-term projections? Again, looking at the demographics, we understand this area is really kind of in the growth area of the city. So, what does that look like when you're looking to build practices that are either maybe very new practices, or you've relocated a practice from an existing location to help support that family? So, we're really excited that these are things that will give us concrete items, that are really going to help us focus on what really going to help us focus on what are the needs of the facility and not really what the wishes are. We might sprinkle in a wish every now and then, but we really think the needs are going to be driving on the aspects of what is going to be for the medical family clinic.
Collaborative process is really kind of the basis of our team, and it's really the basis of our own firm's approach to how we do things. We understand that projects like this are complicated. You have different layers of administration, both at the county level, at the JPS level, down to the user level. And then that collaboration also extends to the neighborhood, to the users, to the people who will actually be in the facility. And so we really want to think about that, and we'll really make that a key piece of our process. Knowing where the site is and thinking, as Kelby mentioned, it's in a growing part of town and a changing part of town. We're very familiar with this part of town with Commissioner Brooks. We did the Southwest Support House, which is just slightly up the road there. We worked on the project you see to the left there, Tavolo Park. We did their amenities facilities. And we're working on a medical office building on Harris Parkway. So we're familiar with the part of town, have a little bit of a jumpstart on things like foundations and stuff like that, because we know what the situation is. We also were involved in the design of the Chisholm Trail Parkway, and so we have some experience in that whole area. And having looked at the zoning, it looks like we may have to make some adjustments to the zoning to proceed with this, and so we certainly have that in mind and what that will mean to the timeline. But we're going to want to work with you to understand what kind of community outreach you want to have so that we tailor what we do to what you would like us to do, what JPS would like us to do, and really engage the community if we can to understand the things that concern them. We oftentimes will have situations where the community will not be in favor of something like a zoning change, but when you sit down and start talking to them, you find out there are things that we do have alignment on. We worked on a project on Magnolia Avenue a few years ago. The community, a lot of the community was against it. We got it through zoning, but at the end, we could sit down with the community afterwards and work on things that concerned them, like having trucks drive through their neighborhood. So if you drive down Magnolia today, you'll see no truck signs that we helped them get there. So things like that that we think are important to do, they're really getting into the trenches with the community, because there aren't any shortcuts. You have to talk to them, you have to listen to them, and we want to do that. I shouldn't say have to, because it's something we certainly want to do. As well as we're thinking about the site, this is an area on Granbury Road where there's a lot of traffic. We're going to want to think about safety, or we're going to think about safety of the project during construction. I know James will work on a community outreach process during construction where he will have both in-person contacts, will have social media so that people can keep up with what's happening with the project, and will make himself available to do that. But the community is all of our constituents. It's who pays for these projects, and we want to help you outreach to the community and do everything we can to make your job as easy as it can be. Amanda, who you well know from many county projects and who you probably like better than me most of the time, because she's the one that actually gets the work done, but Amanda's going to talk to you a little bit about timeline for the project.
Thank you again for having us today. I really appreciate being considered for this project. Just to kind of piggyback on what everyone's said so far about collaboration with this design-build process, that's probably the biggest advantage, is just the ability to collaborate between the design team and the construction team throughout the both phases of the project. We're really going to be working together simultaneously throughout. So that has the biggest impact on the construction launch, that construction start date. With the, we're going to work with the construction team to determine what those big priority decisions are from the very beginning and then start checking those off of our list as we go down and documenting those. So whether that's some stuff that has an impact on a construction sequence, or maybe there's a long lead time item that we want to get procured ahead of time, or maybe there's a price increase that we're going to have to deal with, that may be the same thing, we want to try and procure ahead of time. So we can work with the construction team in the design phase to price out alternate materials and those kind of things so that we have that information in the documents before it even hits the street. So where we, on a traditional design bid-build process, we would be kind of doing one phase, then the next phase, then the next phase. With this delivery process, we're going to be kind of compacting those and doing those things simultaneously. We're thinking that we probably will have early packages, which might be like a grading and a foundation package, where we issue then the, you know, corn shell package and then an interiors package. So we're delivering those drawings just in time to the construction crews on site so that they can get started earlier, they have a more efficient amount of time on site, and they can finish earlier. So we can get you a completed building for JPS and the community earlier than with a traditional delivery method.
We've spent a lot of time talking about planning, pre-planning, and how we're going to work with the community in these type of conversations. That's because those affect the construction so much. We have to be able to know where we're going from day one. We have to establish that and then put a plan together. One of those things is the surety of manpower and resources. We all know we're in a very competitive market. How do we get interest into the project early by our trade partners? How do we ensure that we get the material on site when we need it? So these early planning and all these decisions and all these discussions are to build that plan so that we know we got what we need when we need it. The last thing that you guys want to see are material increases because we didn't think to buy ahead, or delays because we don't have submission manpower, or a delay in a major piece of equipment. So these are all the things that we can do to help overcome that. Again, all the work these folks do on this pre-planning efforts are ensuring that folks like me that are in the operations and James have what we need when it comes time to build. So we're going to talk a little bit about some of the other things that we do to ensure scheduled certainty and budget certainty. One of those is decisions, lifecycle cost analysis, long-term planning, thinking about what this building is going to cost you to run, what the maintenance of this building is. Is it a robust building? Do you have failures over time? What is the issues? So we have some examples that I'd like to bring Don Hinky, our design manager, in to kind of talk about some of the decisions that we may put in front of you that you'll have to decide.
Good afternoon, Donald Hinky. I'm a design manager, and my role is to fill the gap between the design team and the pre-construction team. So I bridge between the both. I'm an architect, but I work for a contractor and I have a design background. So when the architect calls us and wants some questions, I can help respond to them and fill the gaps in their knowledge. And when our pre-con team asks questions about the architects, I can facilitate that discussion. Now, a great example of a recent project, it was a medical office building in California that came up in dealing with lifecycle cost analysis. In early in the design process, there may be a lot of questions about what kind of mechanical systems, for instance, that we want to commit to. And there's different costs to those equipment and different efficiencies. If you're looking to have a very high EY, an energy use index, where you want a super efficient building, that system may cost more. But also, the challenge early in the design process is the design team may not be far enough along to do full-blown energy calculations or do an energy model. So I have a team within the Turner Engineering Group who can look at the programming or the schematic design, do a quick energy model of the building based on some assumptions and benchmarking for the projects, and then put together a report that provides the benchmarks and the numbers to be able to do a lifecycle cost analysis. This project recently in California was, they wanted a VRF system or a VAV system, and the VRF system wasn't quite as efficient as the variable air volume system was, but it, the more efficient system would take 30 years to pay for itself in energy savings. And so then we could provide that to the owner and help facilitate the owner making those kinds of decisions early in the design process, because you have to commit to those systems early enough so the design team can draw everything, and they only draw things once and keep the schedule on track.
Thank you. And then schedule certainty. How do we pre-plan? How do we expedite? How do we get smaller packages? How do we get the things to field for folks like James and our trade partners to be able to execute? And you can see, we've talked about collaboration, pre-planning, and you can see in this conceptual schedule, that there's a lot of activities occurring at the same time. We're overlapping activities. We're releasing packages as they need to be instead of in a traditional delivery method. This does several things. One of the things that it does is it gives you flexibility and time to make decisions so they're not surprises, so that you have the appropriate timeframe to program the building without affecting the end date of construction. I'm going to have James talk to you a little bit about his day-to-day application of these tools.
So good afternoon. I'm James Glass. I'll be the general superintendent for the project. Got a lot of people keep throwing my name out there, doing a lot of work, so I have work to do. So we're going to live up to what we're planning as. So scheduling actually starts in pre-construction with the design team. And what about, we get the design and then we schedule. We work with the design team. We do constructibility reviews. We identify materials that are hard to get, make suggestions for materials that we can replace that are easier to get, identify all these things so that when we have a job come up, it's already incorporated into the job, and we have a schedule that works before we stick the first schedule in the ground. So then it's not just a matter of having a schedule. Oh, look, we got a pretty schedule. We can hang it on the wall and put a plum bob on it and move it back and forth like we used to do in the old days for trying to impress somebody, but it's the actual plan on how we do the job. So we take that, we do it through daily checks. So what we do with our foreman out in the field, we keep him in the field, we don't bring him in the office, we do daily huddles, we do weekly checks to make sure we're on track. It's not just about the monthly schedule update, it's the daily checks and balances and the weekly checks and balances. So when we do the update, we already know where we're at, and if we have to make an adjustment, we already have a plan for that adjustment. The idea is that we do it this way because our trade partner foreman are looking six weeks down the road. What do I got to have six weeks down the road? Not tomorrow, but six weeks. So they identify what's holding them up and identify what material to get there. So we become roadblock remover. So we have a plan when we get there, and that's how we do it. The whole purpose of the schedule is that there are no surprises, that we have a viable plan to make it work. We bring our experience together with all the JHA's, the fire marshal. We have all this experience. I have a lot of experience with JPS on the project managers and how they do things. We try to keep abreast of what they do. In the meantime, we don't have a project there now, but they recently made changes to contractor onboarding and bagging. We're already aware of how all that works. So we keep our finger on what happens with the JPS Health Network so it can bring it all to the project so we can, again, have schedule surety and cost surety.
Ultimately, all that pre-planning and all that thoughts that go in help us hold the budget, right? Hold the estimates, and how early on can we confirm that? Again, with the help of Don Hinky and others, we can take those programs and look at all of our vast history and knowledge of projects that are similar and start gauging, how are we doing against that? And then we can help influence the design to maintain those along the way, consistently going and checking, getting team concurrence, bringing that forward when there's decision points to be made, as mentioned with HVAC systems and others. So how do we get all of that pushed forward in a timely manner? And it's with this collaboration, with this continual check, with making your lives easier. So we boil everything down to those simple decision points so that you have an easy check, an easy cadence of where things need to be and where things are going, and then you have a constant check as we're going through. So when we hit the ground, and as you said, we put the first shovel in the ground, we already know where we're going to end up. There's no surprises along the way. Another opportunity that we have is, we mentioned earlier, is supply chain management.
So also to ensure cost surety and schedule surety is management of the supply chain. We all know since COVID hit, the market is really volatile about what materials available, how long it takes to get, escalation in pricing. So again, we start in the design and pre-construction phase, the operation team, and we help them identify what materials are going to be a problem. We identify those challenges, and we come up with solutions to those challenges before we start to ensure schedule surety and cost surety. We also look for opportunities to possibly have cost savings in that process too. So we have a big process and a big amount of resources to manage the supply chain. One of them is a division of our company called Source Blue. It's a medical equipment supply company that installs the equipment and provides it and installs it, which I don't know at this point if it will be on this job. But my example is on JPS Angio Room project, it came out that we were going to have to hire Siemens to do some actual installation for us of hospital provider equipment. Well, if you know Siemens, they're a multi-layered, multi-country, multi-country company that it's hard to get anything done. Well, I knew who at Source Blue to call in Tennessee, who told me to call to Michigan at Siemens to get a signed contract, because they said it was going to take three weeks. So I made the call to Michigan. We had a signed contract the next day and was able to move the JPS Angio project forward because we have a vast amount of resources that we can reach back and use to ensure that the cost and the surety of the schedule. And the last item I want to talk on is, by no means the last item, is quality control. So if you ever thought about construction in the field, it's a three-legged stool. You got safety, you got production, you got quality. Any leg that's longer than the other one's going to cause problems. So all of them are equally important. I want to make that point. Quality is just as important as production, schedule, and cost. So we start again in pre-con. All my jobs start in pre-con with a design team, our pre-construction team, and we identify the right partners, make sure we got the right trade partners, availability of labor, and we go do constructibility. So we identify all the challenges and how we're going to install those challenges and write up a quality program. So again, when we start construction, we already have the work done. And we take and apply that plan through our quality control plan. We use constructibility reviews, we do pre-installation meetings with all parties involved, JPS, the end-users, the trade partners, so we know what the expectation is before we put any work in to what it's going to be like. Same thing with the mock-up. We build a mock-up for constructibility and aesthetics. Everybody knows what the bar is. There's no question, no question of what's going to happen there. So we do all this. We mentor and coach our trade partners through all this process. It's not an adversarial relationship. They're part of what we do. So the whole goal is, when we get to the end of the project, our goal is zero punch. So we don't have a long punch process. Our goal is zero punch, and yes, it is achievable. Install it and do all the things that everybody in this room talked about from our side to get there. So it is achievable, and I'm going to turn it over to Nick.
I hope everyone can feel the passion that comes from this team, because it's real. It is on the job as well. So final slide before we turn it over to questions. So James did mention the three-legged stool, and something that I do want to make sure we highlight on is safety. And that safety, you know, and everyone says it's the most important it is, and that safety goes beyond just our workforce or our people. That goes to the community and anybody that sets foot on our job site. So we take that extremely serious, and you know, through the questions, if there is anything about our safety program, we'd be happy to share and talk through that. But before we turn it over to questions, you know, several of the highlights that we want to leave you with. When it comes to minority participation, as you've heard consistently through this team, it's beyond a number. Sharon mentioned a few things like the accelerated payment plan. That's the ability to put cash in our subs' pockets so that they're not waiting for whatever the payment terms are. Cash is king to ensure the success of our partners. That's something that we're able to do, and Turner takes that risk. But that's on us to help build true capacity, build success. We're actually doing our Construction School Management Program in 2023 at Tarrant County Community College at the Trinity River Campus. So that's an opportunity for us to also help build capacity and help provide training for some of the workforce that perhaps could possibly be working on our job. So another opportunity to help partner with the community. When it comes to engaging the end-user operations, so this is something that this team does extremely well. At the end of the day, it's about the care of the people that we're trying to care for. That's what this is for. If we're not doing it for those reasons, then we're missing the big picture. It's how do we provide the best care for the people that will be coming to this facility? Schedule and budget certainty. Turner and Pottery and Bennett Partners, at the end of the day, the processes and the resources that we have and the confidence and the experience can really help you sleep at night to know we will meet that budget, we will meet that schedule. We understand how important that is for the visibility of this project and for this bond program. The quality project delivered that James mentioned and the low cost of maintenance, it's looking about this beyond just, this isn't a one-time thing. This is a partnership over decades, we hope. And so it's not us just designing and building for how this thing lasts and then we disappear. This is how do we give you the best product for the next 30, 40, 50, whatever that may be? So mentioned no learning curve. We have a lot of history together. We have history with the Tarrant County for decades. And lastly, on a personal note, my youngest daughter was born in JPS Hospital, so we've got a little personal tie here as well. So we thank you and definitely want to turn it over to questions.
Questions? Turner and Pottery?
Yes, sir.
How long?
I'll let Sharon. I'll let Sharon. Come on, Sharon, please.
How long have y'all worked together? And on this project, everybody's got discrete work to do?
Absolutely. Not only will I be an overseer to actually have a project manager or an assistant superintendent, I'm going to also do boots on the ground. I'm also going to take our responsibility with my team to help train contractors that are looking forward to the next step up.
Sharon, hold on. I'm going to put our relationship about 15 years.
Working from, in detail, we started out with I Am Turf High School for me to actually be on turf. But we also went through the Turner School so many years ago. Sorry, I forget the year, but it's at least 15 years.
Most of my questions have been answered. The only one that remains is talking about projects staying on budget. There was one example in here for OU Medical Center where the project budget was 242 million but the actual cost was 280.
Yeah, absolutely. That is my project that we just completed. And the reason for the open run, there was decisions made to expand the scope. So, scope growth was the majority of that. We also accelerated, so that project was delivered in October of 2020. So, we accelerated a portion of that program to serve COVID patients in Oklahoma City and there were some acceleration dollars that were spent and we turned over several patient floors at the end of June, well ahead of its program schedule in October. So, those are the reasons behind that.
Contingency, again, we've talked about the volatility in the market right now. How does that affect your pricing, guaranteed pricing, things along that top lines?
Yeah, absolutely. One of our biggest tools against that is our sourcing blue stores, or source blue, excuse me. Our sourcing partners know where the market is going. They have direct contacts with manufacturers and suppliers. We also, as Turner, have been monitoring the construction industry for the last 100-plus years. So, we know the growth, the standard growth that's been around for a while. And we can try to project that as we go forward, but we also get that firsthand knowledge straight from the manufacturer. They're seeing the commodity prices rise. We can know that well ahead of it getting filtered through a distributor, local vendor, a supply house, a subcontractor. We get it straight from the manufacturer. So, that's one of the biggest resources. Additionally, staying in tune with the trade market, knowing where the labor rates are going and understanding what those can do. Again, our vast majority of our projects of the 14 to 100 or so we do are in this price range. They're less than $20 million. So, we work all over the nation within this market and understand what those costs and prices are doing. And so, if you feed those 1,400 projects into the system and when you look at it, you can really project what's happening, where you see price increases affect first, maybe the East Coast or West Coast, and less affected here, but we can feel those coming soon. So, that's one of the, I hope that's answered with a few of the techniques we use.
Judge, I'd like to also add Bill's spot on that, absolutely. But also, just a big part of our portfolio is design build. I'm sorry, I guess I should add. A big part of our portfolio is design build and a part of our TEG group, that bridge, is to really help provide that surety so that when, in the pre-construction for the stakeholders, it's not this. It's not, it's 19, it's 12. It's 25, it's 13. And so, typically through a course like this, at the early stages, the contingency is a bit higher, right? But as the design develops, the contingency reduces. I mean, that's not necessarily a new concept, but what the ultimate thing is, is that we stay like this as far as the overall budget. If the budget is established, then we work towards that and have a level of consistency for expectations. But we've done that consistently because of our experience with both Bennett Partners and also Design Build Portfolio that we're able to manage that, along with, again, what Bill said, feedback from the market, feedback from our supply chain.
We have, a lot of our buildings, most recent buildings have certainly been LEED certified, things along that top lines. Michael, I bet has seen a new building in town, our renovation of the Sinclair that is very much LED type thing. Have y'all looked at any of that and that new, because I think that's a pretty new technology, isn't it, Michael?
Yeah, Judge, you're exactly right. And the developer of that actually is unique because he is an electrical engineer. And so, he's taken the approach of looking at electrical engineering and trying to figure out how he can do more low voltage delivery of electricity instead of typical line voltage. And so, it's got a lot of really interesting things in it. It's got a lot of things like battery backup instead of generators and all those kinds of things.
Come back with you.
Yeah, and I had a tour with him probably two months ago, something like that, to look at all that technology. Certainly some really interesting things that I think, especially in public buildings, we want to be careful that we're not at the cutting edge, we're not the bleeding edge, but we're introducing technologies into these buildings that we can all stand behind and that we can trust. And certainly things that we would want to look at that are there. I can't stand here and say that they would be things we'd end up using because, again, we'd want to look at the life cycle, cost analysis and those sorts of things. But there are some really exciting things that Farouk has done there.
And the last thing I will say is, I guess, we're going to build four of these. This is the first one. I'm one that loves to pay less as opposed to paying four different groups to figure out what to do and how to build and how to gain the efficiencies. How much efficiency do you feel like could be gained if one company was basically charged with building the same four buildings, realizing that you're going to have to, a site location is going to be different. I've heard that, I know that.
Yeah.
But, and there's going to be programming within those buildings, but maybe the outside, the skin, the foundation, maybe a lot of that is the same.
Yeah, there are, I would think of it like this, there are systems that can be the same. The sites are going to be different because one's going to be on a hill and one's going to be flat and, you know, all that kind of stuff. And the zoning's going to be different because you're going to be doing these in different municipalities probably. So, there are going to be some things like that. They're going to be different that they have to get adjusted for. The foundations are always going to be different. But I think there are certain systems in the building. Let's say that going through this first one, we figure out that there's a certain HVAC systems approach that we want to take, that absolutely gets applied to every building after that. So, there are a lot of things like that. There are the programming elements, the deciding what an exam room is like. Once we get that, that's something that we can simply translate to the other one. So, I would think about it more as a collection of pieces and parts that can be reassembled. And so, you would save money on that assembly of the pieces and parts. And we'd be happy, I'll speak for the team, to say we'd like to help you with those other three as well.
I'm sure you would. Commissioner Fickers, I mean, I guess your building, your medical home on Highway 10 is how old? So, at least, and I'm sure that y'all have thought about this in your, you know, you talked about the meetings to get input on the design for that, but certainly a building that's, they've at least probably identified some of the things they might have changed in the period.
Judge, some of the efficiencies and the costs is harder at this point now, exact percent. You can probably arrange some other efficiencies gained if they were off. A lot of dictates on if they're able to be built that relative to the same, because you're going to save on some of the general conditions, you would save on being able to buy more, whatever the equipment may be or the material may be, when you're going to suppliers and you can buy larger quantities versus smaller quantities. I'm sorry.
And I think that is important because, you know, I believe that the court would agree and I think JPS too. We would love to have all the medical homes built in the next couple of years.
If they could be, if there's overlap there, there is absolutely significant savings to be had. So, and that's something that we can put more of a study to. Again, I don't want to be throwing out just numbers here at this point, but want to coordinate with Brodus and Levis, of course. But, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
The other thing I would add to that, that you mentioned is it is, we find it invaluable to go tour other facilities that are similar to this, talk to the people that operate them, talk about what's gone well, what hasn't gone well. So, that's something we certainly want to do with our team and with representatives from JPS and project managers.
I really don't have anything at this time.
I've got a question, but this is probably for Kelby if I'm saying the name right. So, clearly, this is not a medical office building. It's unique, it's different. Help us out with some of your thought process behind the components and the specialties and some of the things that you would see going into this medical home and what makes this medical home design unique and different?
No, you're really right. You know, we use the word clinic loosely, you know, on that side because that's what our terminology has always been on that side. But really, this is, when you look, this is more than just that. This is the care for the entire family and it's really putting into that mixed collaboration between disciplines within this facility. So, I really see there's going to be a huge component about collaboration space, not only for families that are working with care providers, but also care providers having that type of space so that they can plan out the best care directives for that. The other thing, when you look at the family engagement with this, the family becomes a huge part of the care at that time. So, they have to have also a part of education. So, there's really a component that we could see coming into this that's more than just an exam room with a sink and a chair. It has a lot more things to do with what are some collaborative educational spaces that can be put into it and really guiding the principles about what are the goals and objectives for the patient. We still look at it, it's going to be very multidisciplinary on that side. So, what are those clinics or spaces, let's put it that way, that need to be more relative to each other? That, you know, does OB with pediatric have a much more collaborative environment than you have with just general family practice? But we don't want to say that those aren't all together, but then the thing that we've seen and the image that you saw with the lead of Park Hill was actually very similar to that. That image is a very collaborative environment. The thing that was important about that is a creation of in-depth staff resource spaces so that those could happen behind the scenes so that they could really think about and talk about that outside the space of the exam room sometimes too, that space that the patient may be habitating at that point. So, it's really thinking about holistic care more than just thinking about, I'm coming in, I'm doing a immunization and I'm out the door, or those type of things.
And I haven't heard your team talk about what you've learned through COVID. Can you explain? From a delivery perspective, what are some specifics that we can see in this medical home based on what you've learned?
Sure. I think there are really two key factors and the first factor is flexibility and adaptability. How can you take a space, and let's use, maybe you have a conference room, I'm just using that as an example, it's a training conference-type space, but we decide in our design process that we're going to put some other utility support in there. That becomes maybe an infusion space later that it can be quickly adapted and used for the greater good of the facility, other than just taking a space and doing that. So, adaptability is going to be really key. The other thing that we've really seen is air quality and really thinking about the filtration of the space. We actually had a very interesting study that we looked at and, you know, a typical building of this nature is more of a business occupancy. There hasn't been a mindset to put a high filtration into those types of units when you're doing that. Even going to MIR filters makes a huge difference when you start looking at that because we're looking at the particulates, you know? Even me standing here talking today, there's a particulate that's going into the air on that side. And so, I fully understand why the healthcare system is still masked when you're looking at that because that's a protection of that system on that. So, there's that, plus there's UV protections that can be put into air systems. There's a whole range of different items that can be put into that to start evaluating it. And then we want to really springboard that back with the collaborative team approach to see what is going to be the best cost objective to still meet that need about what would be care trends that we need to be focused with because I feel like this is not one of those things that's going to go away. We're going to have another item to think about. And you look at the way that we design buildings today, when you look at the sterility of a building that happened like in the late 50s, that was response to TB. So, they became a really clean environment, a durability of environment to kind of walk down, wipe those type spaces down. And I really, if you look at a lot of the care environments that are starting to emerge again, again, hospitality is still important, but adaptability and cleanability and really making those spaces more durable and cleanable on that side. So, I think we're going to see another design influence starting to occur just by virtue of world health issues that is not new to our industry, it's just maybe new to this generation of society.
Okay, there's no other questions, man. We thank y'all very much for being here. I'm glad you're doing it and we'll talk about 10-minute break and then we'll start again.
So, okay, so we're now at our third presenter. Just a few things before we get started. As y'all, everyone knows, we're going to have about 35 minutes worth of presentation, about 15 minutes worth of Q and A afterwards. Just a comment to the group, this is an open meeting and so there's been some requests by other presenters that they can be in this meeting and listen to other presentations. You're by, there's no way that we can say that you can't be here. We're going to ask you that if you wouldn't mind, we would prefer that you not be here. If you so desire, you have the absolute right to do that.
Thank you.
I'm good with that. So, Jared, will you go ahead and introduce this group?
Yes, this is the Azteca KAI Design Build Team. Take it away.
Welcome.
May I start?
Yeah.
Very good afternoon, Judge, Commissioners. Very good afternoon. My name is Luis Spinola. I'm the President and CEO of Azteca Enterprises. I want to thank the Commissioners, JPS, Brodus, Levis and the selection committee for allowing us to be here this afternoon to make a presentation about the design build of the JP, JPS Medical Home project. We have partnered with KAI, represented this afternoon by Derwin Brodus because we have successfully completed projects together and because they share with us the same culture, values and aspirations as far as client satisfaction and project delivery is concerned, as well as supporting the development and growth of minority companies and local community engagement. I am sorry, our VP of Operations, Mr. Jerry McPhail couldn't be here today, but he has over 20 years of healthcare experience. Next, I would like to introduce our Director of Preconstruction Services, Mr. Chris Davis.
Guys, I'm on a conference call.
My name's Chris Davis.
JD, you might want to mute.
Oh, okay. Love you, bye.
JD, you might want to mute your...
It's muted.
It's not muted here. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon. Chris Davis, Director of Preconstruction for Azteca Enterprises. Azteca Enterprises is a 30-plus-year-old company. We've had a presence in Tarrant County since the mid-1980s. Local firm, Hispanic ownership, MWBE. Over the years, we have acquired an extensive resume of completing, successfully completing work for various governmental entities and also including healthcare projects. We have a diverse background as far as delivery methods, including design, build, delivery methods for the project. And we're also active with the communities we're involved in. We're an active member of the Fort Worth Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, Regional Black Contractors Association, Regional Hispanic Contractors Association, United Black Contractors Association. It's something we're committed to. We are very fortunate, when I say we, I'm talking about Azteca myself, to be repartored with KAI of Texas. And I'd like to turn this over to Derwin right now to talk about KAI.
Well, good afternoon. Again, I'm Derwin Brodus. I'm a principal with KAI. I'm very happy to be with you here this afternoon. KAI, of course, is a 41-year-old MWBE firm based here in North Texas and we've done tremendous amount of work working with public entities across the metroplex to deliver successful projects. But really, what's key about us is that we truly believe in transforming communities through integrated design and construction nexus and make a difference in communities that we work in. And I think this is a key difference here between us and anyone else is that really, when we go and we work on a project for you, we truly believe we're leaving an impact that's going to transform that community, but also where we're connected with the community. We've become parts of the communities we work in. So, it's like working with a cousin or with your aunt. We want to get to know that stakeholders are in our immediate community and it's extremely important. But our team, our design build team of KAI and Azteca, we have a long... we have a long-term working relationship working with them. So this isn't something new to us. We're 100% owned MWBE firms, partnered together, delivering projects. We're currently completing a design build project for Parkland right now, a cleaning for them. So again, this is a tried and proven team that we're bringing to you today to present our qualifications.
You see on the screen, and I believe on the handout in front of you, our organization chart. We prepared this chart for the pre-construction design phase. At the very start, as the pre-construction manager, I'll be the primary point of contact, working with Derwin and his team, and also with Mike Ronnie and the operations team for the delivery of the project. As we move forward and get closer to finalization of the GMP, contract amount, get closer to the start of construction, I will start to step back away, Mike will start to step up and take over the overall leadership of the team, the end result being a seamless delivery of the project for the JPS Health Services. Part of our team members that aren't all here tonight, or this evening, but some are, listed the firms that are certified MWBE firms. We recognize JPS had indicated in the RFQ that they were going to address medical equipment planning. We also know medical equipment planning is extremely important for this project from a design standpoint, budget standpoint, delivery, coordination with other components of the overall building. And we have been blessed to have Covellus agree to join our team and provide that strength. I'd like to turn it over to Anna right now to talk about Covellus.
Good afternoon. My name is Anna Verhalen, and I'm with Covellus. We're a full-service medical equipment transition and activation company. We've been in business over 20 years, and we have also been blessed to be on a team with Azteca and KAI previously, working on projects for some other known entities in the area. We also are looking forward to bringing some support around kind of the new world that we're living in with COVID and mitigating a lot of the strategies around making sure that we get equipment in place, we get equipment in budget, and you can get fully up and running and functional. We've worked with JPS previously in the past. We've been excited to be on the cardiac and cath lab project for the East expansion a few years back, so we were looking forward to possibly repeating that.
Good afternoon. My name is Pam Irvin-Davis, and I will be responsible for the MWBE outreach and also for the community engagement. One of the things that you heard from Chris and from Derwin, they talked about this, the particular team being 100% in MWBE, and that is a very unique project, and they have a lot of working experience together, and I think that that's very positive. We have committed to reaching the 25% goal, but we've also know that we have, will exceed that goal. We are saying that we're going to go to 35% or more. So we're, we're excited about the opportunity to be able to open up to other MWBEs in the community, as well as we want to try to look with local, work with local companies. And also in Arlington, they have at UTA, the Veteran Outreach Center for businesses, and we want to see how we could also collaborate with them to incorporate some veterans into this program as well. We'll look at the various scopes of services and try to see how we can break out packages. Later on, you will hear them talk about how we will go through a lot of that in breaking out packages smaller for MWBEs. As you can see right here with the minority women VBE spin, the Parkland Family Medical Center that they're currently working as, as a team together, Azteca and KAI, they are actually exceeding the goal of 35%. Here it says 35%, but they've actually surpassed that. So that's a very good thing to see. And as you can see, they've also, there's other projects, but all of them show where there were goals set and how they actually passed those goals. And that, that is what we plan to do on this particular project as well. The engagement, we will work very, very closely with the, the JPS diversity team, as well as the Broadest Levis team. We will work with them, with K Strategies, to make sure that we reach everybody, work with all of the advocacy groups and organizations, because all of our, our team members are actually members of the various advocacy and chambers, and we want to make sure that we do what we can to continue to build capacity for all of our MWBEs that will be included into this. We will also try to look at ways that we can do any type of training or anything that can help enhance or help in the projects. You know, I'm using an example of talking about maybe, you know, some people have OSHA, and they're, you know, they're, they are have expired. And so now we're going to look at how we can see if we can help them, you know, put a training or, and do 10 and 30 together, do some one-on-one meetings with them. But we're just looking at ways that we can expand, but we want to also reach out to the community and see how we can get them involved as well. So on the pre-con, as I mentioned earlier, we'll be breaking up packages, working very closely involved on the selection of the MWBEs in that process. And then we'll look at some workforce development. One of the things that is Luis with Azteca has done a very good job. He's probably one of the first members of the RBCA that worked with the Second Chance Program. And I believe currently now he has about close to 69 employees working in that program. And if permitted, we will try to incorporate that, as well as have job fairs in the community, and work with the Veterans Outreach Business Center as well. The reporting is extremely important because you'll want to know on a regular basis how you're doing on the project. And so we'll have all of that information available to you. So that'll be one of the other, you know, big things that we will do, and do some random audits, go out and meet, look at some of the companies to see how their, their function, to see if they have any problems or anything. We want to do what we can to make sure the problem is running smoothly. Next, we have the community engagement. And if you notice, one of the things that we have is up top here, we talk about the safety, the environment, and the engagement. And, and, and I kind of consider that is how we see this project going and being very successful. All of the communication, we'll do some town hall meetings, get feedback, because we want the community to be engaged, because we're coming into their community. And so this is going to be a center that they will, you know, support. And we want to make sure that everything that we do, we want to keep them involved. We'll work closely again with the program management team and K Strategies to make sure that we're, you know, getting the communication out on a regular basis. We'll have different types of collateral that we'll send out on a regular basis, as well as have either in-person or virtual, whichever is convenient for the community. But we want to make sure that everything that we do is based on feedback that we receive from the community. As far as the workforce, we will work, do, again, job fairs and things like that, but we want to really center and focus on the community. And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn this over to Derwin for him to go over the design build. Thank you.
So as we talk about the design build approach, of course, we have your traditional phases of work. In your RFQ, you mentioned that we need to do program verification. So before we kick off schematic design, we want to work with you program verification and work through schematic design, design development, construction documents, bid and negotiation, and eventually we want to get you into the ground in October, correct, on this particular project. So this team knows how to do that, and we're going to walk you through a couple of things that we want to talk to you about this afternoon, as far as how we're going to do that during design. So again, this is a very iterative process, and we have these multiple pieces that play into how this overall puzzle is going to come together. You have the user group engagement, which is extremely important during our programming phase of work. We have, understanding the operating maintenance impacts of this project, and the choices we make in materiality, the approach to construction, that's going to impact your overall operations long term. We want to understand the scope to budget, again, a very volatile market right now. So we want to make sure as we go along every single phase of work that we're doing those budget checks, and even when we're making some of those decisions on the materials and the components in this project, that we, we assign a value to that, and we can come at you as a user to determine whether or not that value is approached to, to go up or down with that. We start looking at end-to-end pieces of the overall project and program verification. We really want to drill down to really get an understanding, how is this medical home need to operate? So we want to work with those user groups, we want to work with your image, we want to work with your providers, to understand even within the exam rooms, where's the sharp container going to go? And we don't want to do that when we're out in the field during construction. What we want to do is do that during design. We want to use our 3D visualization, we'll do mockups, we'll do whatever, use whatever tools is going to allow your users to be able to understand how to make those decisions. But we also want to understand the adjacent flows, patient flow. Again, this past two years kind of opened up our eyes as far as how do we approach these types of facilities? You know, how do we provide the space for your providers that are going to be utilizing this space? Do we have sort of our own board, sort of our board, or, or sort of approach to this? How do the exam rooms cluster? How many exam rooms are assigned to providers? All those things that we're going to question throughout the very early on stages of the process to make sure that we design this for today and for tomorrow. We need, these, these, these facilities need to be adaptable. But some simple things, we understand we're, we're designers and we're, we're contractors, right? And again, your, your end-users, your clinicians, your doctors, your, your commissioners, it's hard for you to look at asset of plans and understand exactly what we're doing. So we're going to use the tools such as 3D visualization, look at some of the very acute pieces of the project, such as the reception desk. What level of protection do you want on that protection on that, that reception desk as your guests come forward? Do you want to kind of open concept? Do you need it more protected? We want to use those tools to allow you to make the best decision going forward, and we do it right the first time around.
Good afternoon. I'm Ronnie Beck. I'm the General Superintendent for Azteca. We talk a little bit about the logistical considerations. Once we get a project, we go out to the site, we start to build our three-hour logistics plan. We look at the surrounding communities, the residential retail business, whatever's around that area. We set up our site based on the surrounding community there. So we have our job site offices, we kind of put them off in our lay-down areas, we put them in a less visible area. And noise control, you know, we're going to make noise, it's construction, we're going to be loud. But we try to schedule some activities where they don't start right at 7:00. You got heavy equipment, you got some guy jackhammering. We kind of try to get stuff later in the afternoon. So, you know, we'd have the noise around the job comes up, it kind of goes away and doesn't cause a, create a lot of issue. Traffic, we always go back, create traffic control plans, and we go back, look at the roads surrounding the job site, we'll pick up a little less traveled road, we'll put our entrance there, if we give ready material, safely come back out of the job site. Dust control, when we're doing our site grub, and rough excavation and grating, we have the water trucks out there, we keep the dust down. And then trash in a clean site, it's a, it's a pet peeve of mine, is going to job site, everything needs to be organized, everything has a place, put it neatly, keep your trash away. Because I always think, and I think the whole team is, if the job site's a clean site, it's a more productive site, it's a safe site, it's a site that fosters kind of a, especially inside the building, foster with your trade partners, they have the, the quality of the job, just creates a different attitude on the job. The quality of the job, I think the trade partner, the quality comes up, because they're on a job where people care. You know, I've been on a lot of jobs when I was younger, working in the field. And to me, back then, I was young, I didn't know a lot, but I knew that was a bad job. I didn't know much about what went on, but I knew that's a bad job. So we kind of keep our stuff organized, neatly placed, and then, but overall, just, you know, a clean job is a safe job, is a productive job. And safety, of course, we have a site-specific safety plan for every project we do. And we have the, our trade partners, we get their safety manuals, we keep those all on site. We have all, we have a JHA program all of a sudden in the morning prior to the work beginning. They fill out their JHAs. Once a week, we require them to have a toolbox talk meeting, a safety meeting. And then once a month, we'll bring our, our safety manager on site, and he'll conduct a job-wide safety meeting, kind of a stand-down. And we talk about things that are going, currently going on in the job, just to keep the job safe. And, and I think all these things that we do are one of the reasons in 2021, Azteca had zero recordables on all our projects. So that's a testament to all the guys in the field, the managers we had, superintendents and, and everybody, even our trade partners. Because once you have a safe job, you create a, a good environment, I think everybody responds to that really well. So. And I guess with that, I'll hand it off to Mike for project manager.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Mike McEluso. I'm Project Manager for Azteca. The, my main responsibility on this project would be the overall management of the project, which means also managing the risk that's associated with the project. We will use our standard three-phase approach. To get started on that, we would have pre-construction meetings with each trade before they start. And mainly those are, first of all, we would plan with that subcontractor from start to finish, whatever his activities are going to be. We would work with that subcontractor to make sure that his vendors, or his suppliers are going to be able to provide the materials and equipment or whatever is needed in a timely manner to meet our schedule. And then we want to verify that activity will meet the expectations and the requirements of the project. A few of the risks we would manage are, number one is cost control. The key step in managing the cost pretty much starts with performing an early buyout with the subcontractors and the trade partners and verifying that they have a complete scope of work before we issue any subcontracts. Also, to have a constant overview of the cost control system and managing the budget. Our goal on this project would be to make sure we're good stewards with the JPS investment. Next item is document control. Part of my job would be working with a project engineer and the design team on the submittal process and approval, making sure that the project logs are up to date and accurate, and also making sure we start the process of closeout documentation from the beginning of the project and carry it through to the end. So that way, at the end of the project, then we're ready to submit those final documents to JPS. Schedule control, I'll be working with pre-construction team on the overall construction schedule. When we start bringing in the trade partners onboard, we'll conduct a pull planning session, so everyone has a complete understanding of the schedule and what, what they need to do. I will also be working with Ronnie and the team on the schedule, is it on updates as, as the project progress goes forward. That way, we can identify any deviations and maintain the updates on the schedule throughout the project. Regarding the communication side of it, this is a key aspect of my job, keeping everyone informed. To accomplish this, we do have a web-based program called CMIC that allows everybody full access to all the project documentation. It, it allows you to see things in real time and that are current and correct information. Again, I believe Pam mentioned the diversity participation and community outreach. I'll be working with Pam on our diversity participation program from the initial announcements through the final reporting of the project. And additionally, I will be working with the team on our community outreach efforts, assisting JPS team with anything they may need. At this time, I want to turn it over to Chris so he can give you a greater detail of our schedule.
When we were requested to come or get prepared for the first interview, we were asked to put the schedule together for the project. We, we did, and I believe we shared that information with y'all. We took the information that was available to us from the RFQ, utilized our best judgment, knowledge, put our expertise together, and came up with a schedule. utilized our best judgment, knowledge, put our expertise together, together and came up with a schedule. That schedule lacks JPS's input, okay? So as we talk about the schedule, I just want to talk about what we've provided is a probable sequence of events that would get us from the start to the end of the project. Completely lacking ownership's buy-in, which is extremely needed in order to make a schedule, a working document works for everybody. So let's understand that. So this was, if, if I was talking about a budget, I would tell you it's a opinion of probable cost. So maybe I say this is an opinion of probable durations, okay? Just to kind of qualify that. Uh, from the start to the finish, we have, uh, 59 weeks for the design phase. That would be from notice proceed, the initial kickoff meeting, all the way through the completion of the IFC documents. Um, we believe with a design build approach, it'll allow us to have early bid packages. Uh, and we do believe that we can be started with a groundbreaking in October this year and commencing with, uh, early civil work. Um, there's some things we need to work through, uh, site location, uh, municipality permitting requirements, okay? Uh, so, but we do believe October is a, a doable objective. Uh, we have 19 months for the overall construction, uh, from start to finish, start design to, uh, JPS occupancy. We're looking at 25, 25 months. I'm sure you know that this is a very volatile market. Um, supply chain shortages, uh, labor shortages, unavailability of certain materials. So design build is absolutely the best approach to allow construction, working with the design team, working with JPS, to identify the issues that may need to be talked about to come up with the right solution, okay? And that allows us to get the issue, information gathered, the pricing prepared, presented so we're making the right business decision and spending the money in the right way. Uh, the schedule on the screen you're going to see is just kind of a summary schedule. It has all the design activities in blue. Uh, in, uh, acknowledgement that's a St. Patty's Day, all the construction activities are in green, so. Um, at this time, I'd like to turn it back over to Derwin, talk a little bit about, uh, why, uh, or some of the advantages that the KAI Azteca team provides.
And what you have listed on your screen is basically all of your strategic values. And what we've done, we've aligned them with our values. I want to key on a couple of those values up there. And one, I think one says is very important that we really believe and truly believe in is stewardship and financial stewardship. You know, we treat your dollars just like it's our dollar. And it's important that we understand that, of course, this, this product is being funded by the public, correct? So we had to deliver a product that's going to be sustainable, a product that's going to be long-term, um, so, long-term serve the community well. And so we keep that in mind for every single decision that we, we, we make as we move forward. Um, the other thing I want to really want to, want to, um, drill down into is, is teamwork and collaboration. You know, this is only successful if we get your input, your feedback, and we are involved throughout the process, um, to work together for a common goal. Again, there's a lo, a number of different risks in the market that we need to, to work against, but we can only do that collectively together. And so we got to have that strong network to really pull together to deliver this project. And Luis has a couple of the comments he wants to share with before we close.
Thank you, Derwin. Well, eh, why select Azteca KAI design build team for this JPS, JPS medical home? Now, we are committing to 100% minority participation at design level, 35% at pre-construction services, and 35% minimum, which we think we can, we're going to exceed on construction, super, subcontracting opportunities. We have the ability to start immediately and break ground in October of this year, like Derwin's mentioned. Uh, we have the resources to procure and expedite long lead items, obtain permits, and streamline the delivery of the project. We are 100% minority owned team, committed to minority involvement because we represent the community that you serve. And our increased opportunity for M W B, V B is because we understand better how we can break out packages to increase participation by minority companies and help them to be successful and bring new technology into their operations and promote local employment, especially amongst minority communities, local communities. We are proven performer for design build projects, community focused clinics, and keeping them on budget and on schedule. And bring creativity and innovation and always transparency in the process. We are a unique team that leverages capability, qualifications, and mutual values that increases capacity building opportunities. Like I just mentioned, our ultimate goal always is to exceed client expectations. I really appreciate your support for minority and veteran businesses because our companies have been able to grow thanks to these programs that you have supported for many years. I hope we have shown you through our RFQ, RFP, and our interviews that we are your best partner to build this JPS medical home. I want to thank you so much for allowing us to be here again. And thank you for your consideration. And I, I hope we, we, uh, did a good presentation, what you were expecting. Thanks so much. And I, I guess we have the Q and A section.
Questions, uh, questions, groups?
Luis, have you and KAI worked together on previous projects?
Yes, Commissioner, several, several. For many years, maybe more than we want to say. But yes, and, and Darren, Darren James, and, and, uh, Derwin.
What is your healthcare related experience for both design and construction?
Yeah, well, we've been, uh, doing, uh, medical buildings, uh, medical facilities for many, many years, since the eighties. Started, we started being in the eighties as subcontractor. We did work on many, many facilities. Eh, and eventually we became general contractor and we continued to do work, make up facilities. Uh, we were fortunate, eh, this is about 10 years ago, no, 12 years ago, we got involved on a joint venture to build the Parkland Hospital i- in, in Dallas. Then we have done work for UT Southwestern, uh, eh, facilities. We've done a lot of different work for the Texas Health Systems. And we've done work for a lot of different medical, eh, Baylor, obviously, Baylor. And, um, we did some work for JPS as subcontractor many years ago in the main campus. And obviously, eh, KAI has a tremendous amount of experience. And also we, we hired a, our VP of Operations abroad. He's, he used to work for Medco, when he was younger, for many years. And then he actually was the, eh, COO of a big, uh, a medical, uh, healthcare company, program, construction manager. And he's now our Jerry McPhail. Unfortunately, he had already programmed his family trip, you know, and, and he was going to cancel. And I'd say, no, please, you need to go with the family and we'll make the presentation represent you well, but, and no.
And just to, just to supplement, so, um, as Luis, um, has mentioned, so we're currently working on the Parkland Family Medicine Clinic together. It's a design build project. And we're just about 30 days away from completion on, on that particular project. Have very tight timeline. Um, KAI in, in, in general, actually, medical homes and clinics is a good spot for us as far as our, our, our experience and our flow from architecture and MVP perspective. But we have a very deep portfolio in the healthcare arena. In fact, we just stood up a new office in Indianapolis, um, in which we're doing, we're, we're working on the replacement for the IU health hospital system there. So it's definitely an area of growth for us that we're going into. But we definitely have the best strength to be able to support this project and experience this for your project.
I noticed you didn't put my precinct garage on your design list.
Well, that may have been.
I'm proud of that project.
I'm very proud of that project as well, it's one of my favorite projects, so, but, yeah. Thank you.
I, I do have a few questions. Um, one is, it looks like, it feels like the Red Bird Clinic is probably the closest to, you know, so far what we see and understand that our neighborhood medical home would be. And so this was completed in 2021. What was the projected budget and then the actual budget for that project?
Um, also the Pissel River, like, um, that, that is a great question, um, Commissioner Allen. So that particular clinic, you're actually talking about the Parkland Clinic that's in Southwest Center Mall. Um, that project was completed as in 2021. It was an adaptive reuse of one of the existing boxes. And it's just about the same size as this one. And, um, as far as the dollar value, I think it was somewhere in that 16 to 20 million dollar range, if I can remember correctly in, in my, in back of my head. But somewhere in that range. Just stay on budget, yes, in overtime, yes.
Um, and then, what do you, what, what is your, for whoever wants to answer this, what's your current understanding of the needs of the Tarrant County community for these neighborhood health people that are particularly in the southwest?
Well, just in our past experience, we're working with, um, these types of projects and medical homes, we know that the, um, target areas of service are always centered around the community and the very specific needs in there. And so, um, those were listed in the RFQ as far as the particular areas. And so we really focus on that and really getting an understanding from the end users from the community as far as how that, that, that particular medical home needs to be designed to specifically address the short-term and the long-term needs of that community. Because again, we want to make sure we promote healthy communities and preventive measures in order to, to keep coming to your, ultimately to your hospital. So, um, it's a, it's a great question, but I'm really reserved to give you an in-depth answer because really it is, it's about asking the right questions early on in the process to drill down into what the exact needs, what the exact solution needs to be. So I know I, I danced around that a little bit, but it's, it's difficult to answer that question without really drilling down into it and, and really having those conversations.
Um, and then my last question is, you talked about, um, the cost of materials. Um, what are your thoughts on, um, you know, volatility of the market and labor?
Yeah. I don't want to sound flippant, but this market is changing daily, okay? And, and it really is, and I don't expect, uh, to see it settle out, uh, for quite a while, particularly with some of the world events going on. Uh, it requires, uh, teamwork, working with Derwin during the design process, the JPS staff, talking about options, considering options, pre-planning. The, uh, the network outreach, um, that we're planning to do, that not only will be with the community, that will be with trade partners, creating awareness for it. Um, we create awareness, acknowledgement, give them an idea on the schedule. They'll start to say they're going to reserve time and look at bidding that project when it comes out. Part of this gets into relationships that we have with the various trade communities or trade partners. Um, so staying on top of the, um, the marketing conditions, tracking, delivery lead times and all the key items. And right now, almost everything is getting to be a long lead item. I was talking on wood doors and I'm now hearing 18 to 20 weeks down wood doors, when that used to be eight to 10 weeks, so. All of it has to be tracked, having a good schedule. Uh, the schedule that we presented to you is what I'm going to call a milestone schedule. There will be a section developed and dedicated just to material procurement. When we can release, how long it takes to get there, will it be in time to, uh, install on the building? Offering you solutions for those items that aren't going to make it in time. Whether it's going to be, uh, polyisoboard for the roofing and talking about alternate roof systems, temporary roof systems. A lot of things that we'll need to go through and talk about, provide the team the ability to make the right decision. So I, I hope I answered your question, but, um, you know, labor shortages. Another thing, community outreach, talking with the trade partners. Um, we're currently doing this on another project. I'm, I'm talking with trade partners about a job. Yes, it's going to be coming out in June, still looking in June, so they know, and they have it on their calendar. They're going to bid that project in June, they know it's going to be there. And I think that really helps solve a lot of the, uh, the labor problems. Pull planning sessions that Mike mentioned about with the subs right at the start, that'll get in the level of detail. Manpower, daily productions, we'll go through all those items. So we start construction, we have a really detailed plan of where the critical issues are and be able to monitor on a daily basis.
What advantages would you see? We've got four of these, I think, that we've got.
Yes, sir.
Obviously, we're talking about, what advantages would there be to moving ahead and just saying, okay, we're going to get someone to do all four of them?
Well, that's a great question.
And I bet y'all could do all four.
Yeah, and I'm going to let Derwin really answer that question, uh, so.
Well, you, you have a couple of models that you have. You have a couple of medical homes that you've already done in, in the past couple of years. So the first thing is we want to do is we want to take the lessons learned from those and see how we can improve on that. But there are some advantages to doing all four at the same time. Um, but I think if we kind of drill back and kind of step back and look at where we are today, from a design perspective, it's really spending the time during programming to really get that program um, really tight to as far as what it needs to be in the design guidelines. To make it to where that, this particular, um, prototype, if you want to go with a particular design. So a particular, typical design can be done by one firm, it can be done by multiple firms. You could hire us to do the prototype and that could be, you know, done with other firms or with the same firm. You have a variety of different options as far as the way you can approach this from a procurement standpoint. But really, I think it really drills down to getting that program, um, correct. So that it can be module, um, it could be adapted for the different models. Now, when you go into the different communities, of course, the service area has changed a little bit. So you had to kind of think a little bit broader, right? Because the components that go into this particular medical home may not be the same components that go into a medical home on the other side of Tarrant County. So it's not going to be exactly the same building because, again, the treatment and the areas of treatment are different. So, um, there's some things to think about there. And I think it's something that definitely you should think about internally, um, if you wanted to take that approach. But it's definitely something to consider, um, as you go forward. But again, you know, you're hiring one or more architects or design build firms to do this, you also get some diversity in design as well. So there's some, there's some pluses and minuses both ways.
Because we discussed that, uh, in prior days. Eh, because we're leaving this issue, this problem on the jobs, is to be able to standardize the materials that you use on the, on the, on these, uh, medical homes. Kind of have, because each, eh, each medical home is going to be different because of the needs are different on each region. But standardize the, the, the mechanical systems, electrical systems, the, the plumbing, uh, fixtures. To standardize finishes, I think you would gain a lot of, first of all, for, for pricing purposes, but also for be able to, to procure the materials and secure the materials so that you don't have the problems that we're encountering in a lot of the projects because of the delays. You know, they don't have a lot of this equipment, don't have the chips, don't have certain parts, and they've been delayed. But if we can standardize the, the certain materials for all your projects, I think that would be a great game.
You have any questions?
I did. Everybody worked on Parkland. Tell me what you did.
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody I run into in the hospital business, I worked on Parkland.
Yeah, we, we did.
Tell me your part.
Yeah, we were, we formed it, eh, eh, John Venture, it was Valforbidea, Austin, Russell, and Azteca. It was called the Barra team, Barra team. And what we did, we formed an integrated team because of the size of the project. We formed an integrated team, which it was basically, we had an org chart for the whole project. And each, each one of the four partners brought the, our best players for each position. And that's how we formed the, the org chart. Then everyone, eh, eh, all the personnel, the staff in the four companies worked for the John Venture. They didn't work for us. And, and it was a great experience. We had a great result. We're able to come right, eh, way beyond, below our, the budget, we were on, on the schedule. And we were able to bring a lot of prefabrication, which that's something we, we've been looking at. That's another thing, you know, maybe see if we can do some pre-assembly, some prefabrication of certain, certain walls, certain sections, touch mechanical systems. But that's how we were able to lower the cost. It was, if I don't remember, if I remember right, it was almost 70 million dollars below the budget that we were able to bring because we did a lot of prefabrication. We rented a warehouse a block away from the hospital. And we prefabricated all the bedrooms. Basically, they were complete, just all they needed was the towels and paper, uh, toilet paper. So, but they were, they were, they were ready. But they were, they were ready. They were about almost eight hundred, eight hundred and fifty rooms. We prefabricated some of the head walls for the, for the rooms. We prefabricated duct, duct systems. We did a lot of fabrication which kind of lowered, helped with our safety, onsite safety, lowered the, the amount of workers that they were working at the same time on the same place, which helps also with your quality. And we were able to reduce our costs some, not very much, but we were able to save that. It helped with the inspections, you know, because the city had to come and do a lot of inspections. Then we did inspections of this satellite location without having to come into the building. Because as you can imagine, it was really hectic operation. And it really helped on, on a lot of senses. And then later, we were towards the end of the, of the project. And Russell, which is a hundred or so African-American company, minority company, and our company, Hispanic-owned company, we formed a team. And we went after the, the bridge that connects, pedestrian bridge that connects the new with the old park. And we built it. We built that, which we, believe it or not, we got maybe more, more recognition for the bridge sometimes than for the parking, for the big bridge, for the big hospital. But it was a great, great model of how to work with the designers. It was a design assist.
I had one other question. I guess it was to be to John at KAI. John, tell me a little bit about your involvement at the site selection for the Ulysses Clinic.
Yeah, most definitely. So actually, that was one of the first, very first projects that I worked on when I joined KAI back in 2013. And we worked very deliberately with your Facilities Department on the site selection for that particular clinic. And so we went out to most of the EDCs in that immediate area to identify sites for that, did test fits, and worked through trying to find the best solution for you before you actually move forward with the, the procurement of that overall property. But it was about, probably about a four or five month product, project that we worked with on that particular piece.
Thank y'all very much, and we appreciate your, your time, your own schedule. So we're back to scheduling. Do you have any one, one second? I just remembered something. Whatever, because now we're not going to be answering. Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah. Sorry, but it was, what we did, we did mockups of the, of the rooms, all the rooms. Everything, we did room, even the operating rooms. We did mockups, we brought, brought the nurses and the doctors. And they say, I don't need the outlet here, I need the outlet on the other side of the bed because when there is an emergency, we come and we're looking for the outlet. So we're looking for the gas connection. Then we, that's why we standardized all the rooms so that all the rooms were the same size. Not left and right, but they were all the same size. And that we, we saved them again, a lot of money on the. We had almost no change orders or modifications on that job and that huge project because we did this pre-construction, the mockups that Derwin was talking about. I think that's something that has to be done for, for, to, to bring the nurses and the medical staff to, to really decide what they, how they want, how they can be more efficient for the patients.
Thank y'all very much, I appreciate you.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity, Nace.
You guys take another ten-minute break and we will have our last group meeting.
Yes, sir. Where have you come to?
Okay, so we are, we're going to go now into our fourth presenter. Just, just a few notes. We're going to allow for thirty-five minutes, until thirty-five minutes of presentation, about fifteen minutes of Q and A. So with that, we'll ask you to begin. If you'll just simply, as you come to the podium, identify yourselves, please.
Would it be okay if we stood here?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Whoever's speaking needs to get near the mic.
Just what members of the court, other guests, thank you for having us here this afternoon, presenting to you today. We're honored and privileged to be here and to consider your design-build partner for such a important project, serving the citizens of Tarrant County. My name is Brandon Schoolbill, and I'm a senior project manager for Whiting Turner. Been with Whiting Turner for seventeen years, my entire career here in Tarrant County. I've worked on many healthcare projects in North Texas, including this one. On this project, I would serve as the project executive and design build manager. But I'm really most excited to be part of this team. Whiting Turner, Corrigan, as a team, have a longstanding history of working together and collaborating deliveries, such as design build and other traditional designs that develop. Much of the success that we've had over the years has been attributable to our ability to communicate and collaborate. And we're excited to bring that chemistry here to JPS. So on behalf of our entire team, we're excited to be here today. We're excited about the opportunity. But before I get going and pass the, the mic off to, to the rest for introductions, I want to make note that two of our team members are now able to join us today. That's Michael Kersey in Trelane Map. Trelane is the president and CEO of Source Building Group, one of our valued trade partners with whom we have a longstanding relationship. Michael Kersey is our division vice president, who offices here in Fort Worth and oversees all of our operations in Tarrant County. So without further ado, I'll pass it off to Chris.
My name is Chris Rosiklis, I am the Texas Lead for Healthcare Team for Corrigan. We, my career has been dedicated to planning and design for healthcare facilities. I'm actually with the Texas A&amp;M, but focus on healthcare, so I've been doing that my entire career. And I would think it's an opportunity to share our experience and our passion for what we do and why we think this project is something to do for us. We are really proud of this. And to the last point, we're really excited about this as a work project for us. We did your last project, we think we've tracked this for a while, so we're excited.
Lucky I'm short. Tammy Testa, I am with Corrigan. I would be project manager on this project. I'm also have had a career of healthcare focus. I'm twenty years with Corrigan and had the privilege of working on your original medical home project in Ulysses. So I would very much like the opportunity to see a second project like that. I think what I like most about being on this Corrigan team is that I've got the advantage of so many, a variety of projects, inpatient, outpatient, and would truly like the chance to work with you all again.
Brandon Kaye, I'm a Fort Worth native and a proud member of Tarrant County. I've been with Whiting Turner for four years. I've had two years of healthcare experience, and all of that has been spent at JPS. I'll be acting as Whiting Turner's project manager for this project and will be involved from pre-construction phase all the way through construction process.
My name is Stacy Brimmer, and I am a certified healthcare interior designer and project design manager for Corrigan. So I have lived in Fort Worth for most of my life, and over the last eighteen years have really come to love specializing in healthcare design. It helps me feel like I can be part of the care team, improving people's quality of life, even though I would have made a really terrible position in orders.
Last but not least, my name is Luke Wilson. I'll be your superintendent for this project with Whiting Turner. I've been with Whiting Turner for four exciting years. Two of those have also been on at JPS with Brandon, where we acted as lead on all the projects that we've completed out there. And we're very excited of the relationship that we've built with JPS. And as a resident in Tarrant County, I'm excited for the opportunity with this project. Thank you.
Talk about some of our Whiting Turner history. And before I do that, I want to point out Haley Wilson, who is responsible for our presentation, a lot of the little rules that you are looking at now. So thanks to her for making us look good. So quick history about Whiting Turner. Whiting Turner was founded in nineteen oh nine. And in that one hundred and thirteen-year history, we've only had three presidents. We're a private firm that has not had any debt since nineteen thirty-eight. Because of that financial stability, we have a five A1 Dun &amp; Bradstreet rating. It's the highest rating they give. And it also puts us as one of, just a handful of contractors who has that rating. As far as healthcare goes, our first healthcare project was in nineteen ten at Walter Reed Army Hospital in Washington DC. So from nineteen ten to today, we've been involved in the healthcare, the construction of healthcare facilities. A little bit of a microscope on Tarrant County and on Fort Worth. Our Fort Worth office employs sixty professionals. In the past ten years, we've completed about seventy projects and are currently working on projects at JPS and have successfully completed projects at JPS. This is our home. This is where we live, this is where our kids go to school, this is where we go to church. Fort Worth, Tarrant County is our home. And we enjoy building projects that serve our community, and that's something that we're passionate about and very important to us.
Just to expand on what Brandon was saying about our experience at JPS, we started doing behavioral health projects, risk mitigation there and renovations to their courtyard. We then moved into joint commission readiness projects, really all throughout main campus and in some of the outpatient clinics. We've also worked on the patient care pavilion. We did some trauma day x-ray fit-outs in there. And then currently, we're starting up a project at the JPS professional office buildings doing some brick facade work there. Collectively, over the time we've been able to spend out there, it's been really beneficial and rewarding in building the relationships with different teams at JPS, the design and construction team, safety team, and facilities team. And overall, we've been able to, to really get an understanding of what their expectation is and provide a good product for them and to the community.
Aren't you, as I mentioned, we do, we work on the Ulysses Clinic, and that's still a project we're really proud of. I think we turned out really fantastic knowledge for the community, but we learned a lot through that process and it's been a great project. We recently are doing a small renovation project in campus and space consolidation that we won. And luckily, Whiting Turner won the construction part, so we're working together again on that. A little bit about Corrigan. So we're an eighty-four-year-old company. We're celebrating our birthday founding this Friday, so tomorrow we're doing that. And our firm started out as, as Jack Corrigan started, you know, as a one-room theaters across Texas. He did a lot of those movie theaters and small airports. And from there, it grown to a large from the top ten company in the, in the country. And what we're really proud about on this one is that ninety-two percent repeat client business. That's important to us, and it means we're doing what we say we're going to do, we're listening. And we decide, we defined its success as how we do it together. So from those humble beginnings, we're still maintaining that culture of client first, employee young. We're now a top ten firm in the US, and that, that matters only because we have the capability of a big firm, we still have small teams that work with your teams, your projects. We've done over two hundred and sixty projects in the last four years on our team, and most of those have been on the outpatient side, which is the project we're looking for here. And that includes being us a top twenty-five firm in the medical, medical office building architecture. And through that, we, we have a lot of clients throughout the country. And the reason why that makes, is imperative for this is we're going to bring that national experience and that national perspective what you're looking for here. Every client has their own goals and aspirations, and they have their own way of care. So we, we've explored that, especially post-COVID. Everybody's, the care delivery model's changed, the expectation of waiting, the expectation of how you see your doctors all change. So we're going to be able to bring that for you.
Yeah, so if you pair a top-designed healthcare firm with a top-construction healthcare firm, you'll see a lot of similarities. This, this slide actually changed, and you might not have noticed it. That's because we have a lot of the same clients, independent of one another. We're able to work in those design-build-delivery methods and design-build-delivery methods. You know, so our values align, our, our people align. So the marrying of us together to pursue a design-build pursuit is very natural. In fact, we came to each other before this RFQ was issued and identified each other as our number one choice on our dance card to team up and pursue this project for our community. So since two thousand, Whiting Turner and Corrigan have worked together to deliver nearly one million square feet of space, totaling almost five hundred million dollars. Those are, those are big numbers. And like I mentioned earlier, we're able to achieve that success in those deliveries through collaboration, through communication. And we're really, really thrilled about the opportunity to do that with JPS.
And those, those projects we've done together have been just a clinic for innovation that we've done for you in Southwest, and we also did a very complicated cyclotron that included excavating beneath the existing floor, adding a large vault for that. And we're currently working together on two behavioral health hospitals that were going to be in Fort Worth, but the reason that's, that's relevant here is that mental health wellness component is going to be a big component of this new clinic as well, bringing that experience together.
So a quick look at our org chart here. Something that I think our org chart displays is a team. Our designing and construction professionals are on the same level, right? It's not a design team and construction team, it's a design-build team. I'll serve as the primary point of contact for that, but we're working together in lockstep from the very beginnings all the way through delivering the project and turning it over to you.
And everyone, the most people you see on this list that have done the work for JPS, that was really important for us. So it's JPS experience versus Fort Worth experience and really that expertise for this project. And that includes our trusted partners. So I mean, it's really important that diversity component, MWBB is really important for Corrigan and Whiting Turner. We both routinely hit our minimums, but actually routinely go above those because it's a, it's a program we believe in. Campos Station area, we've been done in quite a few projects. We have to actually have worked on two projects, it was at JPS, and they're quality. MDP firm, Day and Reno, same thing. They have a local office, they have a huge portfolio of national work. Martina's Moore, same thing. And then so, and then Source Building.
Yeah, Source Building Group, again, Trelane was not able to be here today, but that is a group, a teaming member that we have worked with over a number of years and seen grow with us and grow his business as well.
And then so that leads us to, you know, diversity has always been a part of our culture. We talked about that Corrigan is really a strong paying culture. Our culture is what defines us, what helps us become better architects, better providers, better people to do these projects for you. So we look at ourselves, we always had diversity within, but what can we do for the industry? So this changed how we looked at what we did now, and it changed who we work with, who we partner with, how we grow our team. And also, how do we train the next generation of architects? You know, what colleges do we partner with and what high schools we partner with? So it's a pledge we've taken and something we take pride in.
Thanks, Chris. Whiting Turner, just like Corrigan, has a culture, we try to cultivate a culture of inclusion, diversity, and equity in all aspects of our business and in the communities we serve. Our goal is to really provide opportunities with our trade partners that give them the opportunity to create sustained relationships with us and provide future economic growth and advancement in the future. We've had really good success at JPS thus far on the projects that me and Luke have been over. I'm getting past the twenty-five percent goal that JPS kind of shoots for, and we've had thirty-six point three percent on that behavioral and health job. And another job that's upcoming with Corrigan is the space consolidation project where we're projecting about fifty percent of MWBB participation. The base that we like to implement this process is engaging, planning, and supporting. We start with community outreach events, getting the word out to these partners and really reaching out to them through pre-bid meetings and getting them aware of the processes that we can put in place to help them be engaged and involved in a project. And we do this through, through a few different ways. We can take bid packages and tailor them to smaller scopes that may be more aligned with what their abilities are, or even partnering with larger trade partners just to make sure that they're engaged and part of the project. Through the whole process, we are supporting them in any way we can, assisting, educating, and implementing training just to really ensure that it's a successful project for them and build capacity in the future endeavors.
Yeah, just a story of that success, and I've mentioned Trelane and Source Building Group throughout the presentation. We have worked with them for a number of years. And as I, you noticed in that last slide, there was two things at the very end that were supported mentorship. And through that teaming with Source Building Group, another smaller MWBB firm, we've been really able to grow that. In fact, Trelane and Source Building Group are now, you know, contemporaries. They compete with us now. So through all that mentorship growth, now we find ourselves competing with them as a construction manager in many different areas.
So why is it important that we spend so much time talking about the team and the effort that we put into creating who was going to be working for you? And it really goes back to the community that we're going to serve. This building has a higher purpose, and that is to create- This building has a higher purpose, and that is to create a medical home that will support the community for 20 to 30 years. We want this to be tailored to the community that it's going to be built in. We have a lot of experience creating forums or presentations where we can understand what the community's goals and fears are. Change always produces fear. So we want to hear what those things are and make sure that the space that we create meets all of those needs. We feel like every project is a learning journey. So we want to maintain a mindset of learning how to do this the best for this project. On the previous Ulis project, which I got to work with Tanyan on, we spent a lot of time focusing on the pain points that their existing facility created. One of them was weight finding, and we wanted to find a way to architecturally address that so it would meet the community, maybe have challenges in literacy or language barriers so that that space could meet them where they were at instead of asking them to meet the building. And we're going to bring that forward. We did a post-occupancy evaluation on that Ulis clinic, and we think that that really puts us in a great position to use that information that we learned as we move into the next project. One of the ways we try and do that learning is through a process called visioning. So this is really a chance for us to brainstorm all the possibilities that this project can have, seek innovation when we're getting into this, and understand what drives success for y'all and for the community. We will establish guiding principles that help act as a compass as we move forward. And one of the great things about a design-build team is that it gives the opportunity for the contractors and the entire process to understand the why behind we're doing what we're doing, make sure that even as we get into construction, we're still maintaining that same thought process as to why those decisions were made and moving on forward. After that, we talk about design. So one of the things that we pride ourselves on at Corrigan is that no design looks the same because we really want to make sure that it's a reflection of y'all's brand and y'all's culture and the community around us. It's not about us, it's about y'all. And I think it's another good thing to have Whiting Turner involved because they can really be an accountability partner for us so that we stay on schedule and on budget even when we're considering that design.
As Stacy mentioned, there really is no cookie-cutter solution to this next venture of yours. This slide here gives just a couple of snippets of the studies that we did initially as you all looked at your Ulis site. I think in the end, we had probably nine or 10 of these studies. They were so important because of, this is where these initial decisions are made that directly affect all of your patients on their arrival. And we know that even the simple, what should be the simple task of parking and finding the front door is, is something that we want to be looking at from the very get-go. And we know that from the data that up to 30% of the people that are going to be visiting this clinic are probably having some mobility challenge, whether it's visual or just, just being able to, to walk. And so this is where we, we see a good, strong start to every project. And we would engage and use our Whiting Turner partners as well.
Yeah, we're going to be a part of this process early on and provide input about city utilities and where those are located in reference to the site, whether earthwork may be involved, and really provide input to Corrigan and the whole team about, from our cost assessment, like what we're looking at, but just basically how that can affect design.
Exactly. And throughout our, our design learning journey that Stacy mentioned, it's going to be very important that we be able to tell your story, tell, and visually give the options, the possibilities to the users. These are tools like modeling, rendering, live roofs, a little bit of dance music. And these tools will ultimately be the means that we're able to make decisions and move forward. We have to say that that AR/VR slide that was making all the noise was that we very successfully used on the Ulis clinic. We had Dr. Lum, some of you may remember who was the director at that time. He was wearing the glasses, we were looking at the exam rooms, and to the point where he was going to sit on a stool, Stacy, that she thankfully got a chair under him before, because he really didn't have a stool under him. So all of those tools, as well as the tools that Whiting Turner has.
Yeah, so those are some really cool tools that Corrigan can bring to the table. I'm excited to talk about some of the tools that Whiting Turner can also bring to the table. So you may have heard Brandon mention some of the logistics early on in the construction process when we figure out where the site is located. He mentioned figuring out the site utilities as far as where the city has them in relation to the site or the cut and fill. I'm going to start with the site utilities. One really interesting piece of technology that Whiting Turner can offer in-house is the use of RFID tracking. So we can actually embed an RFID chip inside of a utility and trace where that utility runs through, whether it runs on our site or not. Addition to that, the cut and fill, Whiting Turner has the capability of flying drones over the site. They can take topography photos of that site and determine the cut and fill aspect of where our flat work is, where our parking lot, where our building may be. And that will really help us within the design process to stay within the budget that we have agreed upon.
Right.
These are just some of the tools that we have to offer. Some others during the 3D modeling process, Whiting Turner can take that model and run clash detection. We can ensure that all of the utilities within that building do work within the space. Later on in the conversation, I'm going to bring up 4D scheduling, which I'm also excited to talk about. But all of these aspects together, they're all different technologies that are really going to help bring this project to life fully.
Exactly. And through the process of schematic design and, and design development, we would continue to develop and layer on the information that all of the decisions that are required to have a successful building. We would initially be looking at the adjacencies of, of different departments, that I think having the data from, from the Ulis facility would show us there was probably some successful decisions, there might be some areas where operationally it's time to make changes. So we are fully prepared to study and put those pieces together. I think in the course of making those decisions, we would also be relying on the visioning, those guiding principles, those priorities that you tell us about during the initial visioning. And it, it does really help to guide the whole team to make what we hope is the right decisions. And from schematic in design development, this is, this is a lot more detail in, with regard to the building, but this is where it's really important that we have these, we've set these communication channels. At that point, we'll all have our, our cell phone access and be able to find each other by teams, by text, as well as the channels that, that we need to have with you and your users to make sure that we are working towards a successful product. And on time, right?
So we also want to make sure that the project is turned over on time. What you see behind me is a graphical representation of a, just a general overview schedule that we've teamed up with Corrigan and put together. So as you can see on this schedule, there's a lot of overlap. There's not a activity that finishes and another begins, and then that one finishes and another begins. There's a lot of overlap in there where you see activity isn't quite complete before another begins. There's a reason behind that. With this being a design-build project and us teaming up with Corrigan, it gives us a lot of opportunity early on in the process to whether it be market validation, so going in throughout the design and making sure that the market, the materials are available within the market. Another is the pricing aspect. So what we're talking about with the cut and fill, wherever the building is located, ensuring that some of those aspects that we're staying within the budget that we originally agreed upon. Another is the, I apologize, market validation and price. So all these aspects of the schedule are very important. And some of the technology that we can include within that is what you see behind me again. So within that, we can decide which items we can be, be prefabricated, so assembling them off-site and delivering them onsite as an entire system. Another is direct procurement. So once we, once we identify our HVAC package or different electric gear, if those are, we're seeing currently that those are a year out. So Whiting Turner has the opportunity to directly procure those items rather than waiting on subcontracts to be signed and waiting on those subcontractors to procure those items. What you see on the bottom right corner is the aspect of the 4D scheduling that I mentioned earlier. That's a 3D model that we implement a time aspect to, creating a fourth dimension. This really helps with the, in the field. We see that if we have an excavation going on on a certain side of the building, that we cannot be doing the facade work on that side of the building at the same time. This really helps put a picture behind the schedule for some form of communication in some of our meetings. In the middle there, you'll see phase planning. That is typically a three-to-six-week look ahead, and we create our milestones on that. You'll see the orange and yellow sticky notes are typically a different color and not squared up. Those are our milestone activities. From those milestone activities, we decide which activities have to happen, working backwards from them, ultimately creating the timeline of when those activities need to start rather than getting up to it and saying, oh, we didn't necessarily plan all the activities that have to happen before this milestone. So this pool planning activity really helps us get to those milestones and successfully stay on schedule. And not only is our schedule important, more important than schedule is our safety. Within Whiting Turner, we have a in-house app that we use. We use this nationwide. So this app helps us track trends in the field, whether they be local trends that we're seeing on a project, or regional trends that we're seeing in this area, or national trends that we're seeing across the country. These trends really help us present our safety information to our subcontractors in real live data. It's constantly fluid, ever-changing. But when you have a safety meeting with men and women out in the field, you want to make sure that the information that you're presenting is applicable to what they're doing. You don't want to be talking about something that they really, it doesn't apply to your job site. So we want to make sure that they connect with our safety topics and they understand what we're doing. In addition to target zero, it's not just about what they're doing wrong. Target zero is also a goal towards positive reinforcement. So whenever we see someone doing something right in the field, we can reinforce that behavior and give them kind of a kudos to their higher-up managers and make sure that they're recognized for those efforts. Addition to that, we also try to create a acronym on our job sites. They're always job-specific. It really helps our trade partners feel one with the end result of the building. It's not just another construction project, whether it be SOAR out at Rocketship or Core with some of our data center projects, even Cure, some of our healthcare projects, or ROAR out here at the Fort Worth Zoo. We make sure that our trade partners feel the inclusivity of the project, and they're, they're one with the end result. It's also our core values. The last one that I want to speak on is the quality assurance. Quality assurance isn't the most exciting topic, and we understand that with our trade partners. We try to break it down into three very digestible steps. The first is the preparatory. Preparatory starts very early on in the construction process. It's the selection of our subcontractors, it's making sure that they understand the documentation and understanding the things that need to go into place before they can actually install their materials. The second is the initial phase, whether this is a in-place mock-up or it's a mock-up somewhere else on site. It's a mock-up of what they're actually installing to ensure that it is installed correctly per the manufacturer's requirements and per the construction documents. The third is the follow-up phase. So after that initial phase, all the way to the end of their construction activity is the follow-up phase. That is when myself and my team are constantly checking in on the subcontractors and our trade partners, ensuring that they do not differ from that initial phase. Want to make sure that we maintain a positive quality program and also cultivate that throughout the end of our project.
Yeah, and important to note here, you'll see on the screen the preparatory phase, the one, the one part of that that's highlighted is it said that this is the most important step. And frankly, that's why we really embrace this design-build process, is because throughout the, the design, you have the contractor on board, and we're able to prepare the job for success. We're able to plan for success, walk in lockstep together, provide meaningful input to design, kind of steer the design to make sure that we stay on time and on budget as we work through the, through the process. So, you know, with that, that, that really wraps up our, our, our presentation with, to you this afternoon. I know it's been a long day having four of these, so maybe we can cut it a little bit early, but would, would love to open it up for dialogue and some question and answer if you have. Thank you.
Questions? Mr. Brooks? So everyone, I've got a special question for you. I've never heard of the, the show, but I know Trelane's man. What is Trelane's role earlier?
So Trelane's proposed role with this team would be just that. He would be a team member. He would be what we might call a super-sub. Part of our team contractually would not be a joint venture, more of a teaming agreement, where he would supplement our onsite staff with project management and field management staff and manage a portion of the work. That has been a model of success that we've had over at UT Southwestern, over at Parkland on some of our confidential data center projects. That's really, really worked well. We've been able to work well together to right-size our bid packages and really cast a wider net with his resources to engage more, you know, the community of Tarrant County.
I have a question. Hello, from the fact that I am in the, in the, in the process, one of the folks that educated more on job control, you had some problems with the CEO of the state compared to discuss that with us.
Sure. That is something that we take very seriously. And accusations of a, of a subcontractor's employees that weren't employed directly with us, that we take very seriously. And we have addressed that from the top down to make that, the education and sort of the, the commitment to having an inviting culture of care to all, that be something that's paramount within our company. Again, those are, those are accusations that, that are unfortunate, but again, it's something that we take seriously and don't have any sort of place for in our workplace, on any of our job sites, or any, anywhere in our lives, frankly.
Has this been resolved?
I do not know the answer to that as far as how it has been resolved. I can, I can certainly look into that and provide some follow-up.
Two questions. One, maybe I do not only for as a company, but that was one of my first part of working when I was in the office, was for that totally. Now, having you talk about what you learned from that experience and also what you're part of seeing of the needs of the community, the connection of those, what are some of the other needs that you feel right now, or just sort of view of?
Well, trying, there's probably a bucket of items that, that would be probably appropriate wherever you would, wherever you would land. I mean, but I think for the community there in Ulis, we did spend time, the things that they were concerned about was visiting and being able to have access to the, directly to the building. So I think that is one of the reasons that we ended up with, with the, the entry focus that we had. I, as far as what a community, what, what would differentiate this facility, I think, going back to some of what Chris touched on, so much of the way that cares delivered here in 2022 and, and beyond is really is really forever changed by what has happened in 2019, 2020. So, I think we would, as designers, be really seeing things with quite a different lens with regard to what are the possibilities. I don't think we would have ever imagined that we would be providing care in parking lots. But being able to have easy access for people, for staff from the building to the parking lot would, because we are, we're feeling like we need to be able to flex and you all have to have the ability to really, on a very short notice, provide something not traditional, is I think what the last two years have been. So, those would be some of the things that I guess would affect the way we would approach the project, Commissioner Allen. I think what I learned during the course, or and I kind of go with what Brandon and Luke have said, it's helpful to have an idea of how JPS staff work, what their priorities, what's their expectation of product. And so, the, all of the time that we got, Stacy and I got to spend with the different departments and plannings that was done at Ulis, I think really, I would look forward to, and I do that on most projects. It's, yours people are as much a part of this process as we are. We're here to facilitate, but you all are really the ones that know how you want to operate. And I think there are times when being able to talk about something that maybe wasn't ever thought about, right Stacy? You're especially good at it. And I think those, we can offer to your staff what-ifs.
So, if I'm here in the project, do you all have a relevant part to experience? Were lung star getting [inaudible]? That's within the budget, I would [inaudible]. So, for the [inaudible], was that a productive? Is there something also for [inaudible]?
Okay, for Ulis, we were, I think that there were a couple of modifications that had to do with some of the city requirements associated. We had some turn lanes that I think were some added costs. In general, I think we were very, very close to being on target. Schedule was pushed out a little bit on that. Again, that happened to be some of the city turn lane business, as I recall. The Lumt, and were you also asking about Lung Star or?
No, no, that was [inaudible].
Okay.
Lung Star, about [inaudible].
And that, you guys may be able to?
The Behavioral Health Risk Mitigation Project at JPS, the original scope of work and the original budget was right at about $500,000. That project came in within budget. The scope, additional scope was added as part of some of the joint commission readiness, some additional change order work on other parts of campus in the behavioral health space. That pushed that up just over $900,000 when it was all set and done. But that was purely through added scope.
Just what's your estimated completion? I looked at the schedule, but I had a hard time figuring out how many months you thought this project would take.
So, the, there's a large portion of it that's driven by the process to get to the city of Fort Worth. And some of the due diligence that has to happen and plating that potentially has to happen with the piece of property, that can drag out to 10 or 11 months before building permit to be issued. So, if that were the case, and there's some variables there that could plus or minus that, we think the construction would be another 10 to 11 months beyond that. So, probably a total of 20 months from start to finish.
And then, a couple of you making comments about, well, nothing looks the same or not a cookie cutter. But one of the things that I still feel, at least from [inaudible], we're building four of these. And there should be some efficiencies if one outfit is basically building all four. What can you say to that? And where am I to see some of those efficiencies?
That's a great point. And there are absolutely efficiencies that exist there. For example, if you buy one emergency generator, it would typically cost more than if you were buying four at a time. You're able to alleviate some of the procurement issues that we're seeing that are prevalent across the world right now, long lead items, material cost escalation. You can achieve more competitive pricing from a labor standpoint, too, where if that same group that's installing an emergency generator kind of learns a little bit as they go, they get past the learning curve and then they understand that they're able to do it more efficiently kind of as a package deal. So, there are absolutely efficiencies that exist as you scale this project from one to four.
Yeah, I'd probably had more of a question than Derek. We have a site selected, sites selected? Do we have them bought?
We have a site that is currently, we have an LOI on that. We selected a site. We have a letter of intent to purchase that site. So, we're that close to the contract.
Can you identify in a real general area where that site is?
In a real general area?
Like precinct?
By precinct, yes. It's in, yes, it's in precinct.
Okay, okay. Corgan, you guys did the clinic there in Ulis, if I recall. And our office was very involved in that project. Up until the time it was turned over to you to start your work, we were doing preliminary work for probably five years only. I thought the thing would never get built. But including the, you know, buying of the property, I think three days after the CEO of the oil and gas company we bought it from killed himself, Chesapeake. Anyway, so there was, you know, quite a bit of involvement from our office on that particular clinic. I think the, and I'm like, this is not a disappointment to me because we had a budget. But it's not a real elaborate facility. It's a very useful, unitarian, whatever you want to use the term, but it's not walking into a facility that, you know, looks like a hotel or something. To me, and maybe I'm, and that's not being critical, because you had a budget to work with and we got what we wanted, okay? But I think it's very functional. I've been there a number of times, pre, you know, during construction and of course after it was done. And so, I, you know, you did a great job with what you had to work with. So, anyway, I just wanted to thank you. And that's no criticism, please.
No, we don't think it is such, if something works, that's high praise.
Well, thank you.
No questions from [inaudible]. Thank y'all very much. We appreciate you coming out today. Appreciate the work that y'all did on that medical [inaudible]. And the other JPS. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have any final words?
No, we were, we don't.
Normally, if he has final words, then we'll [inaudible].
So, we do not have a full court this coming Tuesday, so we're going to try to work with JPS and get some timelines, get some more information to each of you, and then come back in April and agendize this so that we can talk about it and see where we go from here.
And then y'all will follow up. We know that there's been, I guess your planning or your, whatever the group is, y'all have reviewed, but you've not interviewed thus far?
No, sir, we've interviewed in JPS as a recommendation from the recommendation committee.
But it has not been looked at, reviewed, or agreed to by [inaudible]. And it's insured. It was my intent that the board of the planning committee and [inaudible] going to approve the ranking of maybe this committee that has done that. Is that happening?
No, I will be speaking to that at the planning committee on the 20th.
So, we'll have that information then?
We're [inaudible]. You're going to be [inaudible].
No, no. The planning committee itself is made up of board members of.
That's a board meeting. It's essentially a board meeting. The executive steering committee is the next one that you typically intend. That is April the 6th.
Thank you, Commissioner. So, we'll work the timeline, our [inaudible]. Your Honor, that's all we have at this time.
We will pass, we will say [inaudible].